Check, 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 check. I already hear the sound. I'm just sharing this link out, friends. I'm going to, uh, just give me one second here. It's the regular, uh, bi-monthly crap show. About ready to get started. Custom. What the heck is that? Let's do... Facebook is always changing things. Do a couple of groups. Hmm, one more. Okay, that should do it. Okay. Let me get my headphones on so I can hear myself. So I can hear myself. Oh, that's much better. Okay. Check, check, check. Alright, friends, so, uh, we're getting started here. Uh, it looks like about three minutes. I don't think we're gonna have time to go through this. I got a late start. Sorry about that. But, uh, let me just check one thing first. See... That thing is still going, so... Let me see what I can get through in a couple of minutes. So this is the mayor's letter. You probably have seen it by now in the, uh, press connects. It was completely bogus. Uh... Do you want, uh, this is what the mayor wrote on Sunday. "Do you want a vibrant and healthy economy? Or see our village turn into a ghost town? Many claim they are for safe green businesses to come to Endicott. The first time we actually have an opportunity for one to come here." Safe green? What's she talking about? Uh, "Since IBM left, they are against industry." No, we're not against industry. "Yet they have brought no alternatives. If the anti-battery people..." We're not anti-battery. We're anti-incinerator. Uh, "People succeed in driving away industry, the economy will disintegrate." Seems like it's pretty... It's like trying to disintegrate something that's already disintegrated. "Our budget has suffered with all the tax revenue we lost. The loss of jobs and people and support for businesses will lead to economic downfall. Empire state development has been referring businesses to our areas." Yeah, the crappiest, most toxic, dirty crap in the world. "Because Endicott has a reputation of not being business-friendly." What? "This constant harassment will reinforce that." Harassment? What's she talking about? Harassment? "Our village will become insolvent." Will become insolvent? Uh, "And the state will take over." "We could lose our village police to..." So we have to accept this incinerator, or we're gonna lose the village police. What the... Uh, "To be replaced by state troopers. Our taxes will soar. The state comptroller has determined that our water bills, uh, need to increase." The comptrollers that our water bills need to increase? Why would the comptroller care about what our water bills are? Uh... "At the water department meeting, our engineering firm representative told me that the New York State comptroller is recommending our water rates go up eight to $818 and sewer up to 818. Every six months, the state will impose this increase if they are in charge." What is she talking about? And the effect of the village... And this will affect the village and the town of Union. Candidates want to take over the village. Take over! "Changing our ways of doing things, giving up our court code, planning and zoning boards to the town. We will have to pay the town to run those and not save the village any money. Many candidates are caving into special interest groups and passing the buck for responsibility on the issues, telling us, uh, to be sure these companies are safe. We already did our due diligence." Like hell. They are, they are safe. She's talking about San Gil. "Some, some are telling the DEC to do research on the PFAS issue. If they had done their homework, they would discover that the DEC has been investigating this for two months. Any politician who asks for more facts have not bothered, bothered to do any research on their own." The DEC is a captured agency. The DEC is not gonna protect us. And I've seen this up close and personal with my environmental work over the past 10 years. Okay? Uh, let me just check to see... Oh. Looks like this is already starting, so... Um... I gotta keep an eye on that, so, anyway, let's go back to the mayor. Uh, "Candidates caving in special interest group, passing the buck for candidates on the issues." The D, uh, the DC has proved, as, "The DEC has proved there is no incinerator. No burning, burning is a requirement of that air permit that San Gil already signed." No, it's not. I don't know where she's getting that from. It's completely bogus what she's saying, you know? There's no prohibition against burning. The proof is that the no-burn group, uh, group is not legitimate. There is no burning and no incinerator coming to Endicott. Let me just try to show you this really quick here, okay? So, um... Let me just do this. Gotta change the frame a little bit. So right here, this is, uh, the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. This is Thomas Elter talking about San Gil's gonna meet EPA's incinerator rule. Uh... This is the US EPA. This says that the SMCC, San Gil's Rotary Kiln, is, it meets the definition of a SISWII unit. That's an incinerator. Here is... Um... Gotta change this really quick. Hold on. Um... Sorry. This is, this is, uh, this is a slide from San Gil's own presentation, okay? Their presentation. It's called "Incinerator categorization." The dryer, uh, it says, "The fact that the dryer operates above the auto ignition temperature of some of the battery cell components, e.g. the plastic pouch indicates these materials will burn." This is San Gil's own, own document, okay? Mayor, what are you talking about? You're going dilly-dilly-dilly-doo again. You're just making stuff up, aren't ya? It's completely ridiculous. Okay, so we gotta join this in session. I'm gonna go away.
Doing that same, just not pulling up.
I don't know why it's... It's showing the, uh...
Yeah.
I gotta make plug in, right? Right today, so it's about right.
It's popping up on the bottom.
Yeah.
Just clicking on the, the watch the internet. It's not been it, but nothing. The screen pops up. That's right.
I'm sure you don't have to do anything? Do I have to click on anything?
No, because that's your guest. Yeah, you have to be on the guest account. Wait, so which one are you, you're clicking on the Chrome right now?
Yeah.
Try the other one, the one on the bottom.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's Patrick. I'm not sure I even have any password or anything to get on that. I'll say we need one. Well, it is what it is, so we'll just have to talk.
Comes up.
Yeah.
I had every five minutes or so.
Yeah, rebooted it.
But the speaker's still...
Yeah, the phone's, uh, outside.
Okay, good.
That's why you're trying to get your info early, so... Under the gun here.
Want to start that?
Might as well, just talk for now.
Okay, well, stand up for the pledge, please.
I'd like to give you two to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, un秤, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Let's have a moment of silence and let's keep Cheryl in her prayers. He had surgery today for cancer. Uh, he's out of surgery and he's doing pretty good. He'll be up in surgery for another couple of days, so I told Cheryl to stay, stay with him tonight instead of coming to the meeting, so... So we'll just kind of keep him in our prayers. Okay, thank you. I have a flat to report on today. Um, oh, the board meeting agenda will now be posted on Wednesday, so everybody will have a chance to see it. And they can, uh, see if there's anything they want to talk about, and they'll still get their, their notes in by Friday for, uh, our hearing of visitors. A few days ago, we had, we were interviewing five companies for a decision to head up our Washington Avenue project. It's really exciting after, finally, after three years, we're getting going on this. Once we pick our firm to head this project, I want to have a Zoom meeting, at least one to start with, and then we'll have more later on meetings, so everyone interested can express their ideas, both the residents and visitors. I'd like to see this for some time in December. Uh, Broom County Arts Council oversees the mosaics and the murals, and my secretary's been working with them in the Avenue businesses for placements of these murals. Now, this money is also in the Greater Bangington Fund, but it's already been accounted for, so they've already got their money to put these in. This is separate than, that are, separate from our part. The money's available for these professional artists, and some of these are from all over the world. These are not just kids painting on these murals. These are real artists. And they're all paid for. All we have to do is buy them where they live and stuff like that, while the time that they're here, if they're out of the country. And they're going to get us some special paint so that the murals will last. The people have to keep them on for five to 10 years before they can paint over them. That's the agreement that they signed. Now, it's become clear that we need our village engineer and our water, electric and street departments, um, to be involved in this project because of our infrastructure, because we found out we wanted to put medians in the middle of the street and found out the water main, which goes right down the middle of Washington Avenue. And our engineer would rather not have tree roots in his water mains. So, so they've all agreed to be part of the group when we set up the committee next year. They've all agreed. And I also have, the chairwoman of the Historic Preservation Commission is also on board. The reason we want her in with the planning is because we have to meet all the historic, um, requirements. And if she's there to kind of help us along, that way we won't get second-guessed as much when we go to the state for, for permission. So that's, so that's going to be, and we'll be setting up this committee the beginning of next year for the actual planning of it. Uh, Deputy Mayor Chapman and I met with Nikki Post from the new community center, what used to be the Boys and Girls Club. We're working on a community outreach committee program. A person I met at, at an event one time, uh, two months ago, has brought it to our attention that there's a lot of needs in downtown Bangington, and she's been trying to help out. So we're working with her and Nikki and a few other people, um, to, to go down to the, down and see what people need, because we have a lot of resources.
In Endicott, you said Binghamton.
I'm sorry, Endicott. Oh, you're right. Thank you, Endicott. Um, we're gonna be meeting Wednesday on this, along with Ms. Melinthia Nash, and if you've never met her, I know Eileen's gonna be on this committee waiting. She's a riot. And John Kornick is helping us.
Nice.
So, so it should be a lot of fun.
Wednesday at 11?
Uh, at 1:00, at 1 o'clock on Wednesday. So, so we need to give our, these people a lot of hope in the, in the village. Uh, some person from our, uh, police reform said people need, they're not poor on money, they're poor on hope. So we're gonna try to give people some hope and kind of connect the people with needs. What we also want to do is Cheryl wanted to set up a job fair at the visitor's center, but Nikki has a better idea at the community center, so we can have volunteers help. So these people who need to get like GEDs or get ready for all these jobs, if jobs come, they're gonna need, we want people to, to apply for them. And so we want, and Endicott proudly has a GED study program, but these people will also help. They're gonna need more volunteers. And Ms. Melinthia Nash said that she's getting involved with the schools. She's gonna bring a couple of principals with her. And the teachers will volunteer to help also. So if we have teachers helping at the community center, you can't beat that. And these are all volunteers, no one's gonna pay. Our next sub-ted meeting, that's our Crime Prevention through Environmental Design, and that's on the 20th. This past year, we've been doing really good. This is with our village code, fire department, police lawyer, heads of our departments. And we're really attacking a lot of problems. Our best thing we can do is we're giving the police permission to go to New York City and bring back our absentee landlords who don't like to come to court. So now they're coming to court. We can't evict, we can't lock down property, but we can bring them to court to pay the fines. And Judge Tullis now that he has his, um, his bailiff, if you will, his court dependent, and he understands the sub-ted ways of doing things, understands that these people that are brought into court have been given a lot, been given a lot of choices. And they really need to be fined and made to do their work.
Yeah, well, so we go down and get them, do you send them back on a bus?
No, whatever, however they get home. They're, they're brought here.
Give them a ticket, let them vote.
And they say, "Find your own way home. Go stay in your apartment for a while and see how you like it."
Love it.
That's the best part. Well, Pat, you're saying that by letting them do this once or twice, it'll get around. The word will get around that Endicott means business. You can no longer say, "Hi, I'm in New York City. What are you gonna do about it?" So, so that's what our plan is anyway. So that, and it's been working out pretty good. And, uh, we have one, one landlord who's very well-known in town, who has actually been cleaning up his, his apartments. He even offered people money to get out. So we are making progress, even with the hard-nosed people, which is kind of nice. Our next police reform meeting is on the 22nd, and that is a very interesting group of people. We're doing a lot with there, too. We're working on a lot of, um, you know, uniting the village on a lot of problems. This was set up by the governor. They wanted a police reform. Of course, our police chief was so far advanced, he had 90% of the requirements that the governor wanted for the police reform done before, before we even were asked to do it. But this is one group that we're all involved in, and it's, uh, it's working out really good. But we're just lucky we have somebody as progressive as our police chief to lead this. We had a water board meeting. We're doing, we're finishing a lot of projects. I won't go into name them all, because people aren't really that interested in every single little thing we're doing. We're cleaning the South Street wells and the Rainy Wells getting done. We're building a, we're, we're trying to drill a new well in Endwell, because we could use a third well. And we're also getting very, very, uh, close to being able to propose our filters to the, to the village board. We have to go through the health department, because they're the ones who are demanding it. Within two years, we have to have these filters up and running, because we've got chemicals in our water that the health department doesn't want there. But we're also taking out the iron and manganese at the same time. These, these, um, filters went from eighteen, eight million dollars to 15 million dollars. So that's why Hunt Engineering is trying to get us as much grants as we can, and they will also help us on proposing grants to our senators and congressmen for it. Because we don't have 15 million dollars. And, but, they said, but Hunt Engineering said, "Once you get this done, you'll have the cleanest water in the area." Well, we sure better for that kind of money. We've had it dirty for so long, I don't know if we're gonna be able to handle it. So we'll see what happens. Um, at a previous me, at a previous meeting, our attorney and I were discussing our compromise on our recycling law. And I wanted to add some additional codes to it because of this glass recycling. And it turned out to be a good thing, because we got a call from a man who had, lives near a glass recycling plant. Uh, at least he did when he was in New York City, and he said there's a lot of smell involved, and there's noise and stuff. We said, "You may not want to have that there. You may want to put it in the airport or even up at the, uh, recycling, uh, landfill." Well, it doesn't matter to us where it is, because this is for all upstate New York. This isn't just a village project. We're doing this for upstate New York. That's why we're dealing with the congressman and stuff that we are, that are on our calls now. So we aren't sure where we're going to put it now, but we are going to be doing some investigating. We may even go down and check out the project before we invite it. The nice part is, all our other projects that were brought to the village, we were just, we just, uh, uh, we just got, we just got them here. We had to make do with what we have. With this, with this project, we get to invite who we want into the village, so we can be very, very careful and vet them and make sure what we're doing before we actually invite them to come in. And that's where we're ahead of the game, so we're kind of, we're kind of, uh, excited about being able to do things that way. As far as our open meetings are concerned, I'm afraid we're still gonna have to go with them like we are, because, uh, this COVID thing is just getting way out of hand, and we can't be responsible. And, uh, Bob and I checked last, our last meeting, we could have, what, three people in here, we figure? So, so we thought, it's really not worth opening up the boardroom for three people, so we're gonna keep it like it is for right now. I, I would love to have people in here. I'd rather talk one-on-one. I don't, I don't like talking through Zoom, but it, we have what we have. Um, oh, let's see what else I want to talk about. We had an electric commission meeting. We have 208 new electric meters. They're putting them in. They're just now starting to put them in. We've got more on order. These are so that they can disconnect, connect, or read the meters from the shop. They don't have to send people out, and that's really a big deal.
Mm-hmm.
Um, our car charging units are actually being used. Uh, Mr. McGee was telling us that he saw people up there using them. We, there, we have to put it, we have to advertise it more. We haven't advertised it enough, but we have to let people know they're even there.
Even if you put it on the Broom County website?
Well, maybe. They said there's an app, too. We need to find out. I have to ask Cameron tomorrow about that, seeing it on, seeing if we can join the app. Uh, Mr. Baker wants to do a survey later and see in the Union District if it's really helping their business at all. Once, once we go like six months or a year down the road, to see if it's really helping, because they're putting it in for free. And that is enough for tonight. So now we'll have committee reports. What would you like to report on, Eileen?
Well, given the state of COVID in the county, I'm not really doing a whole lot. I did take some time to do some bipartisan lit drops this weekend on, for people in my neighborhood, in my district. Um, that was kind of fun. Beautiful weekend, so it was nice to go out and walk. Um... Nobody said anything bad. Uh, of course, I was dropping for both parties. Um, so, I don't know. Good. It's, yeah. That's just the way I am. I'm bipartisan, so.
Sure you are. Right.
I don't know if I believe that.
Should've given me some of your stuff. Maybe I would've done that.
Uh, Ted, do you have anything to, to, uh, report on for your committee?
Uh, I just want to apologize if people are on the Zoom. My, my computer won't let me get the visual up. Maybe in a few minutes it will. It's been doing this for half an hour, so I'm not... No promises, but other than that, I'm, I have nothing to report.
Well, I, I know my computer doesn't like, I can't get on my computer either.
Is your head going around and around like this?
My head is, yeah.
Ted, what would you like to tell us about our Greater Bangington Fund?
About the Greater Bangington Fund? Yeah, I can. Um, I wanted to back up first. Um, Anthony, can you, uh, tell us who's at the meeting tonight, and also can you make a point of doing that each week, because people are there on Zoom, they can't... Uh, the only person we see is Bo, uh, Bob and Anthony, so no one knows unless you tell us, I guess.
Yes, and we should announce it. I'm so sorry. Eileen Keneckney, uh, Robert McCurdy, um, Pat Dorner, myself, and Anthony Bates are sitting here in the boardroom. Thank you. I'm, I'm glad you said that. Thank you, Ted.
And Ted Warner's on, on Zoom, right?
Yes, Ted Warner's on the phone on Zoom.
So then, uh, you mentioned the, on this, uh, you mentioned about checking with the, uh, Historic Preservation Commission chairwoman. Um, have we, have you named somebody for that yet?
Oh, yeah, in January, I have Alberta. She, she and I have been talking about this for over a year.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, and she, yeah, she's, yeah, she and I have been talking about that.
Did that part come to the board where we vote on it? I mean, I know you appoint and we approve, but did we do that?
We have, we, the reason we aren't going to do that, you said, is because I haven't asked Bob to, to write up the right thing yet. We have to, we have to write up something on the historic preservation. We talked about it, but we never did anything about it, because we've got to take it away from the planning board and give it to our commission. So now that we've got you...
Yeah, I gave Bob, um, all the paperwork and you two, uh, about the changes to go back to the other way.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get, now that we're kind of, uh, winding down on a few things, maybe we can get after that, and we'll, we'll talk about that.
But yeah, we need to... We need to put that on a list, because, uh, we, we do want Alberta, but we also need to have the board actually officially approve it.
We do, because we also have to take it off the...
I thought I broke, brought that up in a meeting and we approved it.
Well, you might have brought it up, and we might have approved it, but we have to take it off of the planning board.
Oh, I see.
Okay, so, so we, we did approve to have the position. She has got the position. And right now, it's not really necessary to have her have a quote title, because I just need her to say, she's got all the rules in her hands. She already gave me a copy of them. And just to make sure that when we're doing some of these remodelings on, on Washington Avenue, that we're not going to get yelled at later by the state. Basically, to keep...
So, just so, just so we know, that she's not really officially the chairperson of that yet, but, um, we do want her, and we want to make sure we, whenever you want to do it, we want to make sure we vote and make sure, sure it's official.
You bet. We'll do that. That's on our list.
So the next question I had was, um, you mentioned something about things are going ahead with the Rainy Well. Is there something going on with Rainy Well?
Sure, let me go back to that, because I kind of brushed over. Hang on a second, Ted. Um, let me tell you. They, uh... On both pumps at the Rainy Well, they're finally completed. We had two pumps that we had to have worked on. They sent one at a time out. They're both, they're both completed, and the Rainy Well is up and running at full capacity.
Okay.
Did I lose you?
Is it, is that it, or is there more?
No, that's all, that's all for the Rainy Well. That's all we did on Rainy Well, yeah.
So then, along with that, um, the water board, the planning board, the zoning board, those are kind of a big, important boards for the village, and they, it's required that they be public here, uh, public meetings. And, uh, they haven't been because of the virus and everything. So I think we need to get them organized where they get, these meetings are held on Zoom. Especially water, planning and zoning. Those are important ones.
Well, planning and zoning have been on Zoom, and the water board is open. We do have people come in. Ask Tom Latini. He's a regular. Uh, they're, they're...
But it still needs to be on Zoom for people that, um, because you said only three people can come in there, so we still need to have those meetings on Zoom, so people that don't want to come in can, can be at the meetings. Otherwise, it's not a public meeting. And you only let three in, you said?
Well, that's all we have room for, but nobody's asked. If we have more than that come, then I will, but very few people bother to come. Oh, you know that, because you were, you were on the water board for many years. People don't bother to come. If more than that come, and we don't have enough room, I don't care if we adjourn and go into, we go into the rotunda, because we don't need any of our equipment to run the meeting. We can just talk. It's not like we need the microphones or the phone or the Zoom. So we'll pass, we'll pass that when we come to it, but the planning and the zoning are definitely on Zoom. And we don't have to worry about the water board for two months, so we'll talk about that in two months when we have another meeting.
Well, we should talk about it now, so that it's prepared for, when that meeting comes up.
Well, if we have more than three people, I'll have it in the rotunda, rotunda. We'll still have it open. That will be an open meeting where people can come into the village, um, which makes it nice.
So why can't we do that with the, our village board then also?
Because we might have 20 people who want to show up. We've had a lot of people who are interested.
Well, we don't know until we try it.
I'd be glad to, but we can only let three in, and then they're out of luck.
But if you say we can do it for the water board, then we should be able to do it for the village board. And, uh, if there's however many feet in the rotunda, then, uh, it's first come, first served, like we talked about.
Well, the village board meetings will not be in the rotunda, because we can't move all this electronic equipment in there. We have to have it, we still have to have it on Zoom. For the water board, if we have, if we have pipe, people show up and we go into the rotunda, I don't have to worry about it being on Zoom also, so I don't have to...
So I have a question for, I have a question for Bob. Does that, what she's talking about there, Bob, does that meet the law according to these Zoom, these, uh, public meetings?
Yeah, it does. Uh, you, you're only required to put the meeting on Zoom if you reasonably expect more people will show up to the meeting than capacity will allow. So the village board meetings, I, I think it's pretty clear, these should be and, and, and will be on Zoom, because we would expect... because we would expect more attendance than what our capacity can allow for. Um, in terms of the water board meetings, if, if people don't show up typically and you don't get a lot of attendance and you feel like you can handle the attendance here in the, in the building, uh, with the six-foot distancing and the proper sanitation and, and safety protocol, then, um, you're allowed to go ahead and continue to have those in person.
Okay, then I, another thing I wanted to clarify, Linda, you mentioned community center. And I know everybody knows about the Yankton visitor center, which is over across the street there. But a lot of people probably don't know what is the community center.
That's why I said it's the former, former Boys and Girls Club.
Okay, and is that gonna be, is that the official name of it from now on?
Yes, yes, that is.
Just the community center?
Yes.
Okay. Um.
Committee reports. We want to hear about Washington Avenue.
So, then, um, and I had one last question on your comments was the, the bottling recycle, the bottle recycling facility that Cheryl's been talking about, there really is no company, right? It's just an idea that it'd be great to have one?
Well, we want one, but we haven't invited one in yet. Now, we have an appointment. I forgot about this. I'm glad you brought this up.
Okay, that, that answers my question. So, there really is no bottle recycling company right now. It's just the fact that Cheryl and you, I guess, your ideas, boy, it'd be great if we had one.
Uh, and we found a need for it. And once we talked to Suffolk County. What happened is though Joe Moody has gone to the Coughlin, um, incubator on Holly Street in Bennington. And he's got an interview for us to interview a company, I think, next week. But, but again, we want to.
But we don't, we don't have anything, we don't have anything official. We can tell them.
No, no, we are not going to invite anybody until we know who we want here and we know where we want it. So, we do not.
We don't know, we don't know anything about this bottle recycling facility process. I don't think we should be even talking.
We have this company, uh, that has the machinery that does business with all these companies. And it's gonna be on the, it's gonna be on the news soon. Um, we have a company that has the buil-, building or the machines to do this. There's two things that are involved here. One is that, that resolution that we passed for the wine and liquor bottle deposit, that is statewide. And we're leading that. We've got fifteen municipalities who are going to Albany with us on that, plus, plus some from upstate New York. And the second one is the glass recycling. So, there's two different projects that we're working on at once. The recycling is because we got together with the county union and just realized we have to do something because an increase of three hundred thousand dollars this year for our recycling is just.
Okay, so then the other question I have on that is too, you, you mentioned that, um.
Sure.
You thought it could go down by the airport or the sewer plant, which is flood, flood plain. Um, but you didn't really care whether it was here, uh, or not. And it could, that we, meaning Village of Endicott, is doing this thing for all of upstate New York cities and villages. Why should we spend our, let me ask you the question. Why should we spend all of our money and time to find a bottle recycling company for all of upstate New York to use? If we're gonna put it up by the, if we're gonna put it up by the airport at the dump, why would, why are we spending our time and money on it?
We're not spending any money on it. And it's Cheryl's and my time. So, if we want to waste our time trying to bring something to the state of New York that can benefit us by taking our recycling and reducing our recycling costs, that's, that's our time well spent in our personal opinion. But it's not costing any village money to do it. We're not spending any money to do this. I don't want to spend money. I want to make money. But we just want a place, we want a place to take our glass.
Okay, so then my, as far as my comments go, I had, um, on this, um, Washington Avenue revitalization. Uh, some people are on here tonight that probably didn't really know what that's all about. But we applied for a grant, uh, five, probably five years ago. We, we, uh, this region, this eight-state region won five hundred million dollars. Out of the five hundred million, twenty million was given to Bennington J.C. Endicott. The way that settled out was Endicott got, um, twelve of the twenty mil-, of the twenty million for projects here in Endicott. And it took all this time where we can now start spending the money. Uh, we're gonna spend six million dollars, six point two million dollars. Uh, all of the Washington Avenue, the whole three blocks from North Street down to U.E. High School will be, uh, rehabbed, revitalized. And then the parking lot on one block, the parking lot behind MNT and the alley behind MNT Bank will also be, uh, renovated. And we had, um, a process where we put out an RFQ, a request for, for, uh, qualifications. And we had fourteen architects apply for that, uh, to be the architect to design this whole process. Not, not that they're going to design it. They're going to come up with a lot of the various ideas that architects have for this kind of project. And then we, Endicott, will be the ones who decide what actually gets chosen and what actually gets built there. And so, we've gone from fourteen applications and we've narrowed that down to, to five finalists. And we met with, with them last week and the week before. And so, uh, some questions are gonna go out to them to answer. And then we will continue the process to narrow the five down to the one, uh, company that we think we would want to deal with. And so, that's what this Bennington Fund, um, what do you call it, Linda? Greater Bennington Fund. That's what the, that's what that topic was about.
Yeah.
And that's all I have.
Right, Ted? Okay, thank you so much. Bob, do you have anything you'd like to add for tonight?
No, I don't. Thank you.
All right. How about you, Anthony?
Um, just a couple of Ted's comments on the Bennington Fund. Um, we had the five companies come in and interviewed them a little over a week ago. Uh, our committee met last week to review, uh, the proposals, came up with some questions. So, uh, we're gonna get back with them this week. And, um, our committee will probably meet again in a week to further discuss it. Um, uh, if anyone's been down near Mercer, the Chug Nut Trail Extension Project, uh, has started. And you can see the, uh, the path that's kind of milled out, uh, from near the Loderav Pumping Station all the way up, uh, past the, past the, um, playground area. Um, and up closer to, uh, closer to the road up there, which is a little bit further than I had thought. So, it's kind of good to see that it's be a, like a.
It is cool laid out, yes. I forgot to mention that myself.
Um, we'll have to apply for, uh, you know, we'll go for another grant to continue that from where it ends towards the, uh, Vestalab Bridge. So, you know, and then have some kind of crossway over Vestalab. Whether it's, it's probably be like some, um, you know, some type of crosswalk, um, that'll connect the, the current trail to this, this new extension here, uh, through the village. Um, just a couple of other things. Like commission meeting today, uh, water board meeting last week. Uh, just a lot of, working out a lot of reports on my end. And, uh, talked to engineer today. And we're hopeful this week to begin, uh, to continue some of our paving projects this year. So, we have Bird's Sull Valley and possibly Pine Crest if we can get the, uh, the okay to pave up there. So, so those might be the next, uh, few streets that are being done. And, um, just lastly, we've, we're already into our, uh, budget year and we've done our workers' comp. So, we have the participation agreement for workers' comp on the agenda tonight. And, um, you know, kind of just, uh, reiterating that, that this year, uh, we've, we've been able to save through some, uh, management of the, uh, insurance, we've been able to save about seventy thousand dollars over last year's permium. Um, and that's pretty much it I have right now.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Can I ask you?
Sure.
I just, uh, going back, uh, on this glass recycling idea.
Yeah.
Has anybody, you or Cheryl, investigated what the market is for the crushed glass once it's crushed?
Oh, yes.
And who's gonna make money and who's not gonna make money?
Um, if we can keep it in Endicott, of course, we'll be making more than if we send it outside. But if it's gonna be that much of a problem to put it in Endicott, then we just want to be able to use it. Uh, it will take our glass and it's going to take it out of our garbage. We're saving on our recycling cost. As far as making money, that would be like the icing on the cake if we do do it in Endicott. That's how we're looking at it.
Oh, my, my question is, if you take it, I'm all for getting it out of the, uh, the tonnage, uh, waste stream so that we are charged less per ton. But unless there's a market for that glass.
Oh, there's a big market, big market.
Well, who's, I'd like to know who, I know, I know a few, uh, ideas and a few concepts, uh, you know, beer bottles, uh, things like that. But, uh, I'm gonna be visiting a recycling plant next week. They recycle, they crush glass.
Oh, they're nescum because they.
They bundle, uh, plastics and they, the big moneymakers, the cans, they'll, that they sell to Alcoa.
Yeah, that, that's the ones they use for deposit. This is the stuff they don't use for deposit. This is the garbage, this is the garbage glass. This isn't the beer bottles, the wine bottles or any of that. This is different.
But they'll take, they'll take clear glass, uh, green glass or brown glass, so.
Good.
Uh, uh, I think maybe, well, the next meeting's the day before the election. But, uh, I just want to, uh, I can give you a little preliminary report that this company's already told me that, he said the least favorable recycle item is glass. There's no market for it.
Oh, well, then we're very fortunate. We have some places for it. We went to, um, we went to, uh.
Cheryl has Phil Nettie griddy on that.
Yes, our asphalt, um, company is talking about taking it for the roads. We have a whole bunch. So, we'll, I'll have to have Cheryl repair, redo a report for everyone.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm.
See where it's coming and going.
I'm not trying to be a bummer on this thing, but.
Oh, no, I, you're welcome. That's the whole point of talking about it.
I've been told, uh, via some, uh, Facebook blast that, uh, I know nothing about business. And, uh, before we talk about any of this, there ought to be a market study to see who's gonna take it away and at what cost. So, instead of it just being a political ploy, so.
Well, I'll have her write it up because she does have, she did do the market. Actually, she didn't do it. Um, the lady from the landfill did it. But I will get you her report. She's not here, so I don't have any of her information. I, I'm not, um, I'm just helping her out with it, but I really don't have a whole lot to do with that or with the solar because that's her job. I have to delegate duties. I have too much to do with the police department that I'm dealing with, all their, their projects that I'm enjoying. So, but there is a market for it. Uh, I'll just have her write you a report, well, write a report for the whole board. So, the whole board knows because that would be nice.
Okay.
But like I said, we're just investigating this right now. You know, because we have, we have to start looking outside the box for departments, for companies, for businesses, anything we can.
And again, just so everybody's clear, there is no bottle recycling company that has interviewed. We haven't approached them. There's no bottle recycling company that's thinking of coming here. No, there's no bottle recycling company in the whole nation that even knows we're even investigating it. Is that, and that's right?
There are some who know we're investigating it, but there's been no one invited. We are not going to invite somebody till we know what we're doing.
And nobody has approached us about it? Now, I have not seen, I, I also have not seen any paperwork or any information or any reports. I guess Cheryl, I don't know how long Cheryl's been working on this, but about what the findings are, what the safety of it is, what the viability of it is, does it make money? How does Endicott make money from doing this? Um, we, we can't go on verbal representation at a board meeting. So, somebody needs to come up with a, a written, uh.
I just wanted people to know that we're starting this. This is the beginning. Uh, Cheryl only had her first meeting a couple of days ago and she hasn't finished her notes on it yet.
Because the, the information, the, the information that people are getting, the information that, that people are getting and from her going on, uh, or maybe it's you going on the newspaper or on Bob Joseph's show is that there's this recycling company that's coming to Endicott and it's gonna be great and it's gonna be. But at this point, there is no bottle recycling company.
No, there isn't. We haven't invited anybody in. Uh, this is the concept. This is our idea. This is what we want to do. Now, shall we go on to our public hearing?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay. Um, all right. So, for the public hearing, this is on our tobacco retail license. Um, uh, this deputy mayor, would you please read in where it says placing you to the following so people will know what we're adding to our, our retail? I don't think they want to hear the whole thing. I'm sure they're tired of us reading. Then, then you'll read anything people want, but.
Where, where is that on the section one?
Is it on the website?
Um, I believe it is.
Okay.
But, but I'm still gonna read out.
Is there somebody that knows whether it is for sure?
Yeah, yeah, it is. But I, I don't have it in front of me because my computer's not there. The whole, the whole page.
Is it on the website? Do you know, Anthony?
I believe it's on the website, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, two more people?
You're on the, you're on that resolution. I think she wants you to look at the law.
I'm lying, so do you have a copy of the law?
I do.
Okay, I thought you.
This is the old one. I think she wants you to read. This is the new.
People need to know what we're adding so that they can know what we're doing.
All tobacco retail licenses issued pursuant to this section are valid only for the application and the specific address indicated on the tobacco retail license. Tobacco retail licenses are transferable and assignable only upon approval by the village clerk. Such approval may be granted if, one, the license is transferred or assigned in connection with the sale of a business which is previous, which was previously, previously licensed under this chapter to a new owner who will operate the business at the same address with the existing licensing. Two, no enforcement action has been taken against the transfer assigner pursuant to section two thirty-nine within twenty-four months preceding the transfer assignment. And three, the transferee assignee satisfies all of the standards for issuance of a new license permit pursuant to section two thirty-three dot C. A separate tobacco retail license is required for each address at which tobacco products or tobacco-related products are sold or offered for sale, except as specified above. Any changes in business ownership or business address of a person holding a tobacco retail license shall immediately terminate such person's tobacco retail license provided such person may apply for a new tobacco retail license.
Thank you. Now, does anybody who would like to speak on, on, on this law?
So, if anyone wants to talk, they can use the raise, raise hand feature on Zoom. And, uh, call on you on Zoom. And if not, I'll check, uh, a couple on the phone to see if anyone wants to speak. Okay, Tammy, you want, had something to say on this law?
Oh, I, I had put in to be able to talk, but maybe that was supposed to be later?
Uh, yeah, um.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, that would be for the hearing of visitors section.
Okay, sorry about that.
This is, uh, just a public hearing on the tobacco license, uh, retail law.
There used to be a section in here that said, uh, once two licenses were expired for whatever reason, then only one would be allowed back. Is that, I guess we took that out?
Bob, is that on a different one? We had two at the same time, didn't we?
Well, remember, we, we adopted, uh, a whole comprehensive tobacco retail license law, uh, earlier this year. All this particular law does is amend one subsection of that law, just section two thirty-two B.
Okay.
The law previously prohibited transfers and assignments. And now this law would allow transfers or assignments under very limited conditions as Eileen just read. So, so there's a, a whole tobacco retail license law that's not reflected in this particular amendment. I'm proud of you.
Okay, we got a few people on the phone. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, um, call on them if they'd like to speak on this tobacco law. The first one is, uh, six oh seven, six two one, six seven, five nine. If you'd like to speak on the tobacco law. Would you like to speak on that? How about, uh, six oh seven, seven four eight, eight zero nine five?
Maybe they got their phones muted.
Yeah, they're all on mute, but just asking if they want to unmute and speak on that. We have six oh seven, four two seven, one zero zero two. Anything on the tobacco retail license law?
No, I'm not talking on that tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. How about, uh, next is nine four one, nine six one, four two four four. Okay, next is six oh seven, seven six five, three three four five. And the last one I have is just says call in user one. It's the last one I have.
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well then, this hearing of, uh, this public hearing is then closed on the tobacco law, and we will continue. Now, we come to the approval of minutes. May I have a motion for that?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from ten five twenty.
One second. Sorry, what's her phone?
Yeah, that's true.
Kinda gotta work with me. It's bipartisan now, come on.
Yeah, we might better-
Okay, we do trustee?
Yes.
Trustee Dornner?
Yes.
Dornner?
Yes.
Okay, now for our bid. This is a request from, uh, our chief operator to reject the bill, the bid. So, I need a motion to reject the bid.
Um, I'll make a motion for the Village of Endicott Water Department to reject two bids on ten eight twenty and rebid the chemical bid on ten twenty-nine.
One second.
Water and?
Correct. Oh, my bad, yep.
No, I, I, I saw them both.
Okay.
Uh, we'll do roll call. Trustee Connectney?
Yes.
Trustee Dornner?
Yes.
Trustee Warner?
Yes.
I make a motion for communications for filing A through E.
One second.
Roll call, trustee Connectney?
Yes.
Trustee Dornner?
Yes.
Trustee Warner?
Yes.
Now, communications, action. We have three, so may I have some motion to E?
You, can we do them all or no?
No, we have to do this part, because we have-
I make a motion for the particip- participation agreement for CompAlliance for the twenty twenty-one term.
One second.
Remember when I put this in?
Roll call on that. Trustee Connectney?
Yes.
Trustee Dornner?
Yes.
Trustee Warner?
Yes.
Yeah, I have a motion for that.
Yeah, I'll make a motion for the engagement letter from Swiner and Company.
One second.
Roll call, trustee Connectney?
Yes.
Trustee Dornner?
Yes.
Trustee Warner?
Do you want to-
Uh, yes.
I don't have C. Might been.
Okay. Well, Pat doesn't have C. Yeah.
I got everything except C.
Here, I have, I have an extra, so here.
Looks like this.
No, I got, I got an extra.
You got one?
Yeah, I, I collect these.
No, I don't have that for sure.
Now he does.
It's thick.
Okay, I believe I'm voting for this. This is our small wireless communication licensing agreement.
I'll make a, uh, I'll make a motion to accept small wireless facilities master license agreement.
Uh, what is it?
Yes.
Can you explain this, Bob?
Is this what we went through last meeting? The five G stuff, or is there some difference?
Yeah, it is related to that. At the last meeting, the board approved design standards for, um, companies to come install five G small wireless facilities in the village. Uh, and now, this is a master license agreement with Verizon that would authorize, um, Verizon to install those facilities subject to the design guidelines that you approved at the last meeting.
I've been hearing a few, a few people calling and talking about this, uh, some of the possible, uh, health issues with this, this whole concept that, uh, I think I, at least in, I might like to further investigate before I, I would vote to agree on a licensing agreement. Is it too late to do? Since last time, I guess we authorized a design?
Thank you.
So, last, last time we, we authorized, or we approved design standards that would be applicable. They're like regulations that they would have to follow to make sure that these, um, fit within certain design and safety standards that we have in place. So, that's all. We just got, uh, those regulations on the books. This would allow Verizon to go ahead now and install those facilities, uh, disagreement would. But if you want to, uh, put this off for a month or a meeting or whatever it is and look into it, um, you know, you can do that. Uh, you, you could even, I mean, I, I guess theoretically, you could even ask Verizon to come to a meeting and explain what they're doing, so you get the information that you, that you need to vote on this.
I would feel much more comfortable without jumping into the, I know very little about it. I've heard some people comment. And I'd just like to do my due diligence to look into it before I opt on an install. So, if we can table it for a month or whatever, I'd like to do that.
I would like to, I would like to start with the basics on this. I, the sheets I have in my packet are reduced to half-size. This is a legal document that I think we're going to be voting on approving. The bottom of each page says it's a template, so I, that kinda tells me it's not really a legal document. Uh, when I turn the page, the, 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 um, writing is upside down. So, I think if we're gonna be an official village approving of things here, we should, number one, have the, the full document, full size, get to read it, and I also think, Bob, I think it's a good idea that you do look through this, because someone, I had some, two people call me that said we are in, in this document, we are waiving some rights away for the village, and I think we need to go over them carefully if that's true.
Yeah, Ted, I have looked at this, and I've made several changes to it. Um, it, there's federal laws here that apply that, um, that limit the amount of regulation uh, or restrictions that a municipality can place on these companies that want to install these facilities. They're very favored under federal law. Um, but there are some things that we can implement, like design, aesthetic, safety standards, um, which is, which is what we approved last time around. So, I don't think we're wa- I don't think we're waiving any rights, however, um, it, I, I think it's reasonable if you want the company to come in and give a presentation on exactly wh- what they, what you can expect, so you have a better sense of what they're doing.
That's a good idea.
I, I think that's very reasonable to give.
Yeah, I think that would be a-
Well, yeah.
I think that would be a great idea, because, um, with this money we're gonna spend on the avenue, and several of the companies we interviewed, uh, brought up the fact that period lampposts, period lighting on the avenue is one of the key paramount things in their, at least in their design work. And I guess these, uh, little cell towers can be camouflaged as light poles. And so, I don't think we should give the go-ahead to somebody to do this till we, I mean, we should coordinate this with our, um, with our plan of what the light poles are gonna be like. And we should be the ones who decide what they're, what they look like. And I'm sure they got many, I'm sure they have many choices also.
There, there is a, a permit process, so they would have to come in and, and show exactly what they were going to do, and, and it can be approved or denied by the village, but I, I think those are all very valid considerations, and I think it's, it's worth opening a, a dialogue between the board and the company.
Yeah, I would definitely like to see a presentation.
I think that's a great idea. I'd like to see a presentation. That's good, Bob.
Is there any, uh, reason why a company that's coming into the village, uh, why we can't make money on this thing? Is there, they just have, have, uh, what do you call it, uh, eminent domain? They can come in and put things up if, uh, they want to, or is there any way we could make money on this for the village?
Yeah, you'll see in exhibit A, there are, there's a fee schedule.
Page ten.
And, and there are certain application fees, um, that the company would have to pay, as well as recurring fees, uh, yearly fees that the company would pay, um, for the right to place these facilities in the right of way. So, that, that is built in there. Again, um, those are the maximum, I, I put in the maximum fees that are allowed under federal law. Uh, the federal government has a heavy hand in, um, I'll just say it, seeing that, you know, the, the, the path is paved for these companies to install these things. So, one of the things federal government has done is limit the amount of fees that we can, we can impose, but I did put in fees that are the maximum that the government would allow.
Where do you show the fees? What page?
Page ten.
Get the hands and shoulders.
Page ten, upside down, ten. Don't be smiling.
Yeah, and Linda, could you, um, have this document printed out in full size for us? And Bob, I don't know what this me-
Yeah, I'm sorry you got shortchanged. I, I have a whole-size one. I've had it for a while now, so I don't know why I have it. But, yes, and I will get you the right size. I will get you the right-
Uh, I think the whole board should, because if I have it, probably other people have it this way. Also, Bob, underneath, at the bottom of every page, mine says template, January fifteen, nineteen, uh, two thousand nineteen. I don't know what that means, or is this a, the original template they start with, and then you've changed it? Maybe I've got the, maybe I don't have the ones that are with the changes on it.
Yeah, they, they sent over an original template. I made redline changes to it. Uh, we went back and forth a couple of times, and this is the final result. I can certainly, if you'd like me to circulate the redline changes I made to the board, I can do that.
Yeah, I'd like to see that, and then also a, a second copy of the, the final, you know, the final effort you've made. Have they, have they agreed to your changes?
Yes.
Yeah, if we could see that, plus also then the final version with a, with your changes taken out. Or your redlines taken out.
They agreed to my changes, and then they proposed some additional changes, so I went back and forth probably a couple of times. Um, I'll, I'll, I'll get an email together that gives you the, the whole history of the back and forth. And, you know, Anthony and I, um, met with them, uh, we, we had a, I guess it was a conference call with them.
Yes, of course.
Yeah, I guess this was maybe three months ago or so. Um, and we, we discussed the various kinds of things that they were proposing, and then we went forward with the design guidelines and the agreement, so I'll, I'll get everything together in an email to you, so you can track the, the entire history of it.
Great. Thank you, appreciate that.
Are we talking about every pole, selective poles? I'm trying to understand the intricacies, if that's the word I'm trying to use, of how many poles they're looking at installing on, you know?
Um, yeah, it, it doesn't put a maximum number of, of poles that they could install on. Um, it, it, there's no limit on the number of poles, no. But there are other restrictions which would limit the number that they could put in there. Um, so there's only so many per pole, for example, that they can install, because there, this is just for Verizon, remember. There are other companies who are going to be coming in looking for similar agreements, other wireless, wireless companies. Um, because this is now the push to install five G small cell wireless, um, in populated areas.
So, do, do other cities have more than one company with poles? Or do you just go with one company?
N- no, i- in fact, you can't limit it to one company. It, you, you can't discriminate among the companies. It, it's, it's, has to be open freely to all the companies.
And when Cheryl first brought this to the board, she was saying this was only two or three or four poles on Washington Avenue, uh, only. So, are these poles that will go all over the whole village?
Well, uh, I-
That's to a pole.
They're, yeah, they're attached to a, to an existing pole, for the most part. I mean, theoretically, they can install a new pole, but they, they try to avoid that. They try to install it to existing poles.
Existing light poles.
Yes.
Yeah, this isn't a tower. We're not putting up towers.
No, I understand that. So, these would be, they're talking about attaching them to, to existing light poles versus telephone poles?
Um, well, not only that, though. It, it, it could, it could be any pole, really, within the right of way. It could be light poles, um, dissect poles, even, uh, street light poles.
We gotta get on this, friends.
Be great if they could come in and give us a presentation with a PowerPoint, so we can see what they look like and-
This is a big deal.
What they've done, other places to hide the looks of them and everything.
Hello, Endicott. Hello, hello.
Yeah.
We gotta get on this. This is a big deal.
November or something.
Were you able to get a copy of those specifications that I?
Yeah, yeah.
During my-
Um, I think I have them on my-
I'd like to see what they look like, 'cause if we're beautifying the avenue, and then you got a pole with five different, um, mobile, uh, telephone services down there, it might look pretty ugly, but I'd like to see what they look like for.
I could email you.
So, Bob, did you say there is a limit of how many poles? Let's just take, let's, let's just take Verizon. Is there a limit of how many, or are they unlimited, the number of poles?
There's a limit on how many facilities they can install on a pole, and we put that in our design guidelines. I, I think we put two, no more than two per pole. And, and my understanding is that these, um, typically have a range of about five hundred feet. So, a- a- as I'm recalling from our conversation with Verizon, I wish I'd brought my notes with me, uh, to this meeting. I didn't. Um, I, I think that they said, you know, expect about a five hundred foot distance between these facilities. But again-
Not even.
So, then if we are going to be required, or, or we can't stop, we can't limit it to just one company, we could have three companies or four. One thing we want to make real sure is that every one of them looks the same um, be- between the companies.
We need an environmental impact statement, friends.
You know, we ought to go back and look at the design guidelines that we adopted at the last meeting, because a, a lot of that, um, was, was captured within the design guidelines. For example, it's gotta be colored, the match, the color of the facility has to match the color of the pole, was one of the requirements that we put in there.
So, how many companies are doing this approximately that might want to come to Endicott?
Um, it, however many wireless companies, there's three that I know of, but might be more.
Sprint, AT&amp;T, and Verizon.
Sprint, right, Verizon, Sprint, AT&amp;T.
Nextel, really?
Um.
Two more?
So, would they, would Verizon and Sprint be able to be on the same pole?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would think they'd have to, as long as they're aesthetically compatible.
But then if there was three companies, they would, two could be on one pole, and one could be on the other, but that doubles the number of poles with these things, and I guess at this point, we don't know what they look like.
You know, one of the things to keep in mind, that the company has come to us with this agreement, eh, which, which gives us certain rights and control. Um, one of the things that you'll likely hear from the company is that we're coming in, whether you like it or not.
Right.
Because they, they feel they've got the right to do that, um, in, under federal law. And the federal law does prohibit the municipality from putting unreasonable restrictions on these-
Listen to this, people. You gotta get on this.
Public policy that the federal government has come up with is to promote five G wireless, uh, throughout the coun- country as a means of enhancing, uh, internet access. Um, whether that's right or wrong, good or bad, that's the policy the government's come up with, so, um, you know, they- there, there is a benefit to us having this license agreement in place, but I also don't want to put this document in front of you if you're not comfortable, uh, you know, approving it yet. Let's get comfortable with it, and let's, you know, explore some of the open questions.
Okay.
Well, we have, we have three areas that are very critical to us, uh, as far as the looks of these things, which would be Little Italy, um, Washington Avenue, where we're gonna spend millions of dollars, and the Union Business District, which already has, that was a twelve million dollar re- revitalization area, uh, project there too, so, which they do have, uh, period lam- lampposts. So those three areas especially, we need to make sure of the looks of these things.
This is why they took down the trees, friends.
I had a good question about if, uh, the designs that we saw last week can be duplicated for each particular company, so they don't-
Human health impacts.
Can we just tell, these are the specs, you have to, you have to build it that way, or else you don't put them up, or how does that work?
Yeah, so there is a permitting process that they'd have to go through. There are permits, uh, approved by, um, Anthony's office, and they would have to abide by the design guidelines that we have in place. Um, that specific question, though, whether both companies have to install a, a facility that's exactly the same looking, I think our, our agreement and standards probably don't go to that level.
Mm-hmm. I think that's, I think that's being a bit picky with the fed, with the federal government. I mean, within reasonable limits.
Yeah, that's-
Well, let's see it in writing from whoever is doing this.
Yeah.
All right.
Bob, have you seen what any of these actually look like?
Uh, only photographs of it. I haven't seen them in person.
What, what do they look like? Can you do, is there a way to describe it?
Yeah, um, y- you know the, the, those transformers that you see sometimes?
Yes.
That squirrels go in?
Yeah, maybe something a little like that, maybe a little smaller than those, um, but it's like a box on top of a, a light pole or utility pole.
The size of a transformer?
I, I think they're a bit smaller, aren't they, Anthony?
Yeah, they're smaller.
Yeah, they're smaller than, than a transformer.
Yeah.
Oh, a transformer.
Apparently they can camouflage them maybe as part of the pole, or-
Kinda cool.
We gotta talk about human health impacts.
Well, it's gonna help the avenue a lot with the restaurants or cafes. Okay.
Is that held over or tabled?
Let's just wait, let's just, uh, do nothing, and let's get it, get them to come in for a presentation.
I don't know if we could-
Cause there, cause there is no-
But I'd rather have it be longer. Is it tabled or, uh?
Well, it, it, it can be held over by a, a, a single trustee. It can be tabled by a motion of the board.
So I'll make a motion to table it.
Do you, okay.
I'll second it if that's all right.
To, to a particular meeting?
Uh, we'll have to see what their, what their schedule's like. I would think after the next meeting sometime.
And so this, you're tabling it this, um, based on Verizon coming in and giving us a presentation as soon as they can, correct?
Uh, just, no, I'm just tabling the motion to pass this document. And then we can get them to come in, and, uh, whatever time they can do it.
Okay.
Okay, so motion to table, and then seconded by trustee Dorner. So let's do a roll call. Be trustee Connectney?
Yeah, that's fine.
Trustee Dorner?
Yes.
Trustee Warner?
Yes.
Holy God. Thank you, God.
Yeah, I, I'd like to make this motion. I'd like to make a motion to pay the bill.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ted Warner, and thank you, Pat Dorner, and thank you, the whole board, for tabling that. God bless you.
Yes.
Okay, now we come to the hearing of visitors. And Anthony has a list of who called in and, or who wrote in and what they're going to talk about. I'm going to hand it over to Anthony.
Okay, uh, I'm sure calling everyone, just remember, I have a minute, uh, for the hearing of visitors section of the meeting. So first, uh, we'll go with, uh, Paul Connet.
Um, can you hear me?
Yep.
And the name down here is, is a friend who's organizing a Zoom call for my birthday tomorrow. So that's why it's J. Stan, it's not Paul Connet. Anyway, I would like to respond to some of the comments the mayor made in an op-ed piece in Sunday's paper. She says that-
That's not on agenda, sir.
What?
Are you, you have a, you have a schedule on, on, Anthony will tell you what you signed up to talk about, sir.
Yeah, I, I signed up to talk about San Gil.
Yes, and we would like to hear about that, please.
Yeah, and your op-ed was about San Gil. She, Linda said that the D E C has proved that this is no incinerator. This is a case of-
But you cannot actually directly, um, you, you need, you need to leave me out of it. Don't we put my name into it. Talk about it generally, please.
Okay, I'm responding to an op-ed piece by an unnamed person that appeared in this Sunday's, uh, newspaper, uh, in this-
Who, who is it, Paul?
I can't say that, because we're not allowed to say that.
Oh, okay.
I'm not, and I'm not surprised that she's ashamed of what she wrote, but the, she says that the D E C has proved there's no incinerator. That's regulatory semantics. What the D E C did was to define this operation by its purpose. And of course, we all agree that the purpose is to recycle metals. What the D E C did not address is the process by which these metals were recycled, and those processes are to what we object. They involve high temperature heating, followed by burning, followed by burning of the gases that are produced in an after burner. This is burning. They're not burning the batteries. They are burning the gases produced, which are very toxic when you heat these batteries. Um, eh, this person also said there's no burning, uh, is a requirement of the air permit. Well, I'd like to see a reference to that, because if there is no burning as a requirement, then there would be no need for an air permit. There would be no need for smoke stacks. There would be no need for concerns about P F As. Obviously, burning is involved. The writer continues, the proof, this is proof that there's no, the no burn group, no burn group, that's us, no burn broom, is not legitimate. That's not true. There is no burning, Linda said, uh, sorry, the person said. That's not true. And, and, and no incinerators coming to Endicott. That is also untrue. What is coming to Endicott is a facility which involves incineration, a facility which involves burning of very toxic gases. And to do this right across the street where people live and should play.
Damn right.
The writer continued, this is a manufactured crisis. That's not true. Uh, no burn broom is not manufacturing anything. The, the truth is clear to see. We have no political gain. The insinuation is we're manipulated for political gain. Nothing has been manipulated or manufactured by us. No truth manipulated, and we have nothing to gain except the desire to protect the citizens' health. Um, the writer insinuates that no burn broom has a lack of professionalism. Look at our homepage. Can you really see a lack of professionalism? Look at our position paper. Look at our white paper. Look at the letters we've written to the D E C and to Governor Cuomo. Look at our twenty-seven page response to Tom Elter's letter. All our arguments and concerns have been visible, made visible and documented. What is unprofessional about these? Let me ask that question to all the trustees tonight. What actions of the no science, the no burn broom science team do you consider to be unprofessional, and why? Can you document it, any pro- unprofessional activities of the no science, no burn broom science team? That's my question to each one of you. Perhaps you can start with Ted.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Next?
Uh, yes, I'll, I'll give you the answer. Um, I don't see-
Oh, no. Nice child.
We don't have, we don't have any rolls yet. We don't have those rolls yet.
Ted?
We haven't, we haven't voted on those rolls yet. So you're right, I have, I do not see anything wrong with those, with your, uh, professional experience.
I want to know legally, though.
And the question I had Paul too is why, I do have a question for Paul.
Hey, Bob's talking. Bob's talking, and then you can talk.
Ted, we, we've got, this is the, the hearing of visitors portion. Um, there, there is a, a section on the agenda for board member comments, which, which we'll be coming to. Um, but I, I think this is the part of the agenda where we're supposed to get through the, um, comments by the public, so I think we ought to stick with that.
This is amazing.
I want to bury.
Good job, Paul.
Anthony, can you hear me?
Yep.
Thanks. Um, Madam Mayor, contrary to what you keep saying, uh, the truth is, the truth is that no burn broom is comprised of people who are very concerned that the Endicott residents are going to be once again harmed by air and water pollution and possibly dangerous fires and chain reaction explosions. Since you don't seem to care about that. Um, no environmental impact, no, no emergency response plan. We need to gather to stop this awful fate from happening to Endicott, and you know that. Trustee Warner and trustee Dorner, the option that Village Attorney, uh, McCurdy brought up in the last meeting regarding changing the law from P to S P, I'd like to know if that's being discussed again tonight, since it was advised by your village attorney. Does this suggestion from the village attorney actually add beneficial protections for Endicott's residents and workers now that the law that the mayor, ma- Mayor Jackson and trustee Connectney voted for, which was passed on September twenty-first, the law that now leaves Endicott wide open for any polluting, dangerous company to waltz into the Endicott industrial zone-
Damn right.
Polluting process, since the mayor and the two trustees don't believe in the science and instead believe a company that obfuscates details in their process and has given the village a minute amount of information in their presentation file, which is on the website, that states a part of their process is heating, heating the battery parts that are to them to very high temperatures, and then burning their gases in an after burner. Excuse me, I believe the words for burning that San Gil used in the presentation was thermal treatment and combustion. So the Google says that those are, those actually equate to the word-
Nice. Yes.
So trustee Warner and trustee Dorner, um, should the board reexamine this village attorney, um, recommendation about changing the P designation to S P to ensure the safety of your constituents?
Special permit, that's what that means.
Thank you.
Special permit. One is just like, yeah, come on in. Special permit has to go through planning board approval.
Do we have Carol Leighton? Yeah, he's still unmuted. There he is.
What was that?
You're, you're muted, Carol.
There we go.
Okay.
I think you're on now. Yep, we can.
Okay. First of all, I am very resemble with all the lies and rumors that Mayor Jackson and Cheryl Chapman have been spreading on public media about the group I am a member of, No Burn Broom. As I said at my previous village board meeting, it is absolutely untrue and an outright lie that our group is against any industry coming to Endicott. In defense of our group, No Burn Broom, if it wasn't for our group informing the public about San Gil and all the reasons why they should not be allowed to operate within the center of the village, the public would not have been informed at all, since the village officials did not perform the proper procedures in the first place. If it was done properly with a seeker and a-
Excuse me.
Environmental impact statement with a comprehensive review, it would not have been necessary to form this group, and the process would have taken care of making sure this company was perfectly safe to operate here, and the public would have been properly informed. It was our group who, through our experts' investigations, that the D E C was made aware of the PFAs contained in lithium ion batteries when they are processed and the dangers to our health. Our group has been actively investigating companies to bring Endicott, bring to Endicott that are non-polluting and clean manufacturing companies. These are companies that would benefit Endicott, because they would bring more than just twenty jobs here, and would not harm residents' health and safety. One such company we have talked to is an electric wheelchair company that has been operating for thirty years in this area. That is the type of industry that we would, that we should be looking for, not garbage companies that have no end product to offer, only reduction to dust.
Yeah.
San Gil will only be producing a mineral dust to be sent back to South Korea to finish the process-
That's right.
Into lithium ion batteries. San Gil here will only give Endicott mineral dust and further pollute the area. The proposed glass recycling company will also be reducing glass down to a powder substance, which will be sent to another company for further processing into an end product. Therefore, Endicott will be left with another garbage company with no end product to offer. Why can't the village promote companies to come here that are real manufacturing companies that will produce an end product and not garbage? Also, isn't it true that the D E C still has not approved an air permit for San Gil because of the PFAs that our group, No Burn Broom, brought to their attention?
That's questionable.
Isn't it true that San Gil will not be granted the money offered from the Empire State Development Company until they are physically operating in the building? Isn't it true that in order to receive the grant money, San Gil has to provide eighty-nine jobs, but they are only offering twenty jobs? Also, since, uh, I live in the Town and Union, I am offered the option to receive newsletters from the Town and Union continuously in advance of upcoming board meetings, bids of, bids for construction co- companies and budget reviews. These newsletters can be sent by email to anyone requesting them, which I receive. I am suggesting that the Village of Endicott also offer this information in advance of village board meetings, giving the agenda and any other information the public needs to know by request, by, by any resident. Um, since I know that Mary Jackson, Cheryl Chapman, and Eileen Connectney refused to answer any questions during the meeting, would Ted Warner or Pat Dorner like to respond to any of my concerns? Thank you.
Thanks, Carol.
Thank you.
We have Tammy.
Yes, hi. Tammy Lindo, um, lifelong Endicott resident. I'd like to, I'm, I'm just very concerned about the, um, the D E C environmental impact study. I know that they said San Gil has graciously offered to pay for this and to request it, and I was wondering if there's gonna be some oversight. Um, I don't trust this company, as, as many of the other people on, on this tonight. I don't trust that there, it seems like a conflict of interest.
Okay, okay. Go, go, go.
It seems, it seems like a conflict of interest to me, um, them requesting the, the document and paying for it as well. So I just want to be sure that we know that they're asking for the right information to be in the study, that they're, they're going to be looking at the PFAs and the incineration of the PFAs. Um, and that our board would actually receive a copy of this. So I, I'd like to direct those questions to trustee Dorner and trustee Warner when they're able to talk. Um, I just want to be sure that we, there's some oversight. And I'm also concerned about the fact that I have not seen an emergency plan, um, for the storage of these batteries that they're, that they're proposing. I had heard that they are going to be stored on a, at a building right next to the Nisek substation on East Franklin. And, um, that concerns me, because there's gonna be thousands of batteries in that, in their storage facility. And as we know, back in January, the Taylor garbage was burned to the ground, and a wego from one battery that, um, you know, caused that entire fire. So is there a backup plan, an emergency plan? If something was to happen, God forbid, and there be an explosion or a fire in that storage facility-
Emergency response plan.
For that, because that could be, um, that could be catastrophic for the Village of Endicott as well. And I think we need to think about all the other things that this, this company is, is not, is not out for the best interest of Endicott. And I don't feel that our mayor and, um, deputy mayor or- And I don't feel that our mayor and, um, deputy mayor or trustee Connectney are out for the best interest of the Endicott residents. And I really want to know that there's other oversight being, besides just the mayor telling us that this is how it is. Um, I really hope that you guys will be able to answer that when, um, your time comes. Thank you.
Great comments, Carol and Tammy.
Uh, next I have Terry Farrell.
Hi, thank you, Anthony. It's really great to see some new people on this call tonight. I, we've been doing this for months and I know sometimes we, you know, say some similar things over and over, but the point is we really are trying to get a, um, a very important message, uh, to our community. And, you know, um, some of you know that, you know, I have a personal experience here. I worked at IBM back in the late eighties. I was exposed to trichloral ethylene. Uh, I was working, um, at the time when businesses were booming and, you know, everybody wanted to work at IBM. Uh, it was, it was a really great community and then of course, uh, we learned about the chemical spill and, uh, I was actually studying nutrition. I changed my degree to environmental science, policy and management. And I went to the environmental science and forestry school in Syracuse. And, you know, years later ended up coming back to Endicott. And I thought, you know, we learned about these, um, the dangers of these, um, chemicals, specifically trichloral ethylene. And I thought it was safe to come back to Endicott. And, you know, I, I think all of you can agree with me, we all want to see a prospering and vital Endicott, where everyone wants to come here, stay here and work and raise families, right? Can we all agree on that? I think so. I think we want businesses, I know we want businesses here that are safe and, and friendly, right? But they have to go through a process. You can't just, you know, say, oh yeah, I'm going to bring in a recycling company, glass recycling company and not run it through the process. I mean, the fact is of the matter, San Gil, we know there are some red flags that have been brought up, correct? And when those red flags come up, and, and I really feel that this was a misclassified action. I, I believe because their uses, you know, um, burning batteries at increased temperatures. You know, there, we, we've under, we understand now that there could be the potential of PFAS in the batteries. Um, this should get a type one action, uh, state environmental quality review with a full environmental impact statement. So we could get a coordinator review. Is that, the coordinator review is how I got the school board to start paying attention. And, you know, and I mean, uh, you know, let's talk about something else going on. I mean, our water quality isn't the best, right? Can we all agree on that? I mean, when I came here 12 years, came back here years ago, the water quality is worse than when I, when I bought my home. And we just learned that 1-4 dioxin, which is a highly volatile chemical, is in our drinking water. And the NiPerg, NiPerg has listed it in the top 10, has listed Endicott in the top 10 for the most contaminated water. What we know about 1-4 dioxin, it wasn't regulated, nor was it being disclosed. But good news, um, these emergent contaminants are now being disclosed. Um, let me, a lot of people here may not know what that means. Uh, an emergent contaminant is a contaminant, um, of concern that is, uh, used by water quality professionals to describe pollutants that have been deduct, detected in water bodies, bodies that may cause ecological, human health impacts and typically are not regulated under current environmental laws. The second thing is, uh, I'm, I'm honored in watershed hydrology. Um, I was actually the secretary.
Terry, you're three minutes to go, but thank you.
Okay, well, just real quickly, I asked to get on the water board and I was denied.
No, you
Thanks.
We don't have any opening, but thank you.
Next we have, uh, George, next.
Great job, Terry Farrell.
Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. Good evening, everybody. Uh, I would like to speak on the announcement, uh, from the village of Endicott that San Gil has agreed to do a $40,000 environmental impact statement. There seems to be, uh, a discrepancy in what was said verbally and what was actually printed in the paper. So I, I wanted to share, I did my research and did some homework and discovered that a full environmental impact statement starts at six figures and can go up to 250,000.
Yeah.
Even $1 million.
That's right.
A $40,000, uh, EIS has never been heard of unless they're only going to do a focal impact statement on certain foci, meaning they're just going to test the water? Or are they going to test the land? Are they only going to test the property around the event? Are they going to test the soils around the parks? $40,000 is absolutely nothing. It starts at six figures and goes up from there.
Damn right.
Full impact statement. When they do a full impact statement, they will test the air, they will test what's coming out of the, out of the, the building. And the building, what most people don't know, because you just see the stacks, but if you look at the plans, nobody seems to understand that there's also three ventilator vents that exit through the roof.
Good.
That will also be, uh, have effluent out of it. We don't know about those applications as they were not discussed. So there's going to be effluents coming from two stacks plus three vents that come out of the roof from the devices that are inside the building. Also, as far as noise and vibrations, they're going to be dumping a ton of batteries into an 80 foot by four foot rotary kiln that is going to rotate with one ton of solid waste lithium ion battery fragments that have been heated and then crushed. Now, doing an experiment, run to your kitchen and get a pot and put a quarter in the pot and shake it. You couldn't stand the noise that it is making for five minutes, let alone one ton of batteries in that building rotating. And this is going to happen for 12 hours a day. And we think it was just for Monday through Friday, but I found on documents that it's going to be running seven days a week. So this is the truth, be glad to send it to you on Facebook, just inquire. So I'd like somebody to describe to me the actual impact statement, environmental impact statement and its breadth. $40,000 is not going to do it.
Nice job, George.
Thanks, George.
Thank you, George. Okay, thank you. So that's the end of our hearing of visitors.
Okay.
Next we go on to our resolution of local laws.
I put something in.
Uh, nobody else got in before noon.
Oh, Rob.
Yeah, Rob did get in at 1:30, so he has to do it next week.
Linda, are you kidding me?
Nope.
I mean, like, three minutes? That's all I'm asking for?
Okay, Bob, we'll make, we, we can make, uh, an exception this one time.
I mean, I was working, so I appreciate it.
Get it in on time next time because we have to make out the list and, uh, they're out by 12:30, so.
Okay, so, so, first of all. Yeah, first of all, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. So this topic is about legal counsel and utilizing it properly. Um, actually I have a request, it's a real simple one. Linda and Eileen, can you go on video like Bob, Pat and Anthony by chance?
Uh, my computer's broke, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Bob, that's what happened, my computer broke and it just, it keeps cutting out. I, I don't, and I don't even have one, do you, Eileen?
No, I have my phone.
Otherwise we would be glad to.
Okay, I'll come down sometime, I'm in the IT business, so I can help you guys out. So look at the June 1st meeting. Mayor, it was your idea to rescind the law and the board voted five to zero in favor. September 21st, almost three hours in, the vote was passed three to two to not rescind the law after all. So it unreal, uh, obviously, as you and the other two broke your word. And if you look at the picture in back of me, it says integrity. That means equality of being honest and having strong moral principles. Three minutes later, Bob offered his advice on this topic. And there was no response from you, the mayor, Cheryl or Eileen, the ones that voted not to rescind the law. Six minutes later, that's three hours in, Pat suggested to rescind the law again. Start a new law tomorrow, he said, stating or addressing new requests like glass recycling. Bob proactively stated, what it does do is it allows a window of grandfathering. If this is not rescinded and they apply for a permit, they will get a grandfathering status and then your attempt to propose additional conditions on them at a later date is useless. He then said, so the idea is if you want to impose conditions on this kind of use, this is the time to do it. Forty-nine minutes later, Bob said again, if you want to repeal the law, now is the time to do it. Get it done, we can do legislation with a compromise position if that's the route you want to go. Three times, three times he provided his advice and you didn't take it on September 21st. On October 5th, the October 5th meeting regarding the special use permit, no less than five times that Bob suggests consideration for the SP process. Including, 27 minutes in, Bob states, this, meaning the SP process, is a conservative approach. It's a little more risky to do nothing because it leaves a period of time when we are exposed. It leaves it open. Five times he provided advice and you didn't take it. I have a simple ask, mayor. Since you won't speak now, we, the residents deserve a written response as to why the board pays for legal advice and doesn't take it. It's public record, the village attorney fees budget is 70,000. As of early October, I understand we're at about 150. I live on Cornell Ave, I'm a resident and I want to understand why. Bob is a professional, he adds value, however, you choose not to use it. So Linda, in your response, don't include some vague explanation. Provide a real answer as to why you did not take Bob's legal advice during those meetings. I'd like to know when that email will be sent. Let me conclude. Lastly, this is, the village needs people with business experience and that will take advantage of legal advice. We finally have candidates that offer this and will start adding value on November 3rd. Let me be clear. The change on the 3rd, you can laugh all you want, Eileen. There will be a change on the 3rd, Eileen. Don't take my word, ask the residents.
I'm ready.
It's, it's a done deal. It's a done deal.
Pretty good, Rob, you're still a fuckhead, but that was a good comment.
So would you like to make a motion for the resolution for the local
I'd like to make a motion to accept the resolution LL-22 tobacco license, tobacco retail license.
Okay, now I need a second.
What do you mean, around the resolution?
Yeah, yeah.
I'll, I'll second.
That's the one I read earlier.
Okay, we'll call.
Trustee Connectney?
Yes.
Trustee Dorner?
Yes.
Trustee Warner?
Oh, I was muted, sorry, yes.
Okay, resolution is adopted, thank you. Now we don't have any, we don't have anything for an executive session. Uh, trustee Warner and I have decided to still discuss the meeting procedures, so we're not bringing those up again tonight. Uh, we talked about that today and we're going to do some more work on that. So now we come to our board member comments, I mean, do you have anything you want to say?
Not at the moment.
Okay. Um, Pat, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Yes, I do, this may take a few minutes. Addressing some of the comments of the speakers tonight. Uh, number one, uh, going back to a, a Facebook attack on me this week, uh, there was talk of, uh, the ESD director backing off comments that were made to me and to other people.
What's the ESD director?
Empire State Development.
Okay.
I talked to her, I don't have the exact date, and I know that two other people talked to her. The same thing was mentioned to all three. I understand how she'd be backing off her comments because she works with the governor, so I can see, uh, I can understand that to save her job or to not be reprimanded, so. Number two, the DEC has told people in this group that are on the telephone, they're on the phone call tonight, they're not overly concerned about the air pollution, but they're terrified of the storage facility and the possible fires that will happen. They said it was a big mistake not to look at that closer. And if need be, the, the date and times will come out and the name of the person that said it. I'm not making this stuff up, I don't make things up, I speak the truth. Thirdly, San Gil, uh, to reiterate quickly how they came up with the data to submit for the DEC application is a farce, a four hour test with an engineer that has 30 years of experience with the DEC. Once again, it stinks. As an engineer, we used to, uh, study ways of examining data, which would be, take data over periods of time, you graph them, you do, uh, probability curves to come up with a, uh, a probable answer to a, a problem. Taking a four hour test and using that as the data is absurd and unreasonable as far as engineering, uh, aspects go. And now hearing the rumor that San Gil would like to do an environmental study for us, why don't we all just drink Kool-Aid like a Jones Town and just all just, just get killed by this, this stuff? It's absolutely ridiculous that we would trust San Gil to do any kind of study for us, it's ridiculous. I can't believe it's even being talked about, with the lies that they've told in various Zoom meetings, it's, I just, I don't understand. And fourthly, uh, oh, and oversight, now who's going to oversee, uh, San Gil? Nobody's going to oversee San Gil, so. Number four, going against our village attorney's advice. Many times I've tried, probably over 10 times, to get the board to listen to his advice on this San Gil thing or the permit process. Even going from P to SP, just keep getting clobbered and, uh, I have a feeling it's going to bite us in the rear end one of these days. Uh, I think everybody knows what that might mean, but, uh, uh, when you pay an attorney like Bob with a good reputation, good company, and we shun what he's trying to say, it's a big no-no in my, in my terms, so. That's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ted, would you like to talk?
Yes, I had a couple of things, um. One was, uh, I don't know if everybody heard it or not, but the agenda for the board meetings will now be ready on Wednesday instead of Friday. And they will go on to the website, so everyone can go on there and see them. And then that gives everybody two days to come up with things to talk about, if they want to talk about something that's on the agenda. Uh, where this, uh, mailing in the topics like school children have to do on Friday at noon with the topics they want to speak about. Um, so that's this new method, what we're going to, I guess we're going to try that for a couple of meetings and see how that works. And then a couple of people have brought up this, uh, thing at the last meeting, changing from a P to an SP. Where does that stand?
It doesn't.
This is for the recycling facility. Linda, you brought it up, I was wondering where this, where that thing stands.
I was letting you talk, uh, you want me to talk now? I, I didn't know. Um,
Well, I'm asking somebody, yeah.
Okay, well, no, I'll answer you, I'm sorry, I just didn't want to, I didn't want to take up your time. Um, yes, uh, we will be going to readdress that. What we have decided is, and I have talked to my lawyer, we've had a, a, a very long conversation on straightening some of these misnomers out. We wanted to add a whole lot of things to that restriction. I don't want to just waste time writing, writing code after code after code and adding all these pieces together. It costs money. So we decided, instead of taking up that time, we're going to write it all together. But I've run into problems with this glass company. I don't want to, I want to put in as much as I can this time to do it right. I want to make sure. And when I talked to this gentleman who contacted me this weekend about the smell and stuff, I want to hold off. I want to see and I might want to add something into it, where he said that it's going to be a very, a very lucrative thing if we do get it in the village. However, he does want me to just put in a few restrictions and I think we need to investigate it more. And since Pat's going to a recycling plant, I want to wait and hear what he finds out because I want to know if I need to add more restrictions. I want to add restrictions in altogether. Sun Goo has, this is information I'm going to give you all for the first time. Sun Goo has not sent anything to the DEC and the P-FAS. Peter Hef from the, from the Health Department has said it's not a big deal. He doesn't understand why they just don't do it and get it over with. I don't know why they're holding off. I don't, I don't talk to Sun Goo. I can't speak Korean anyway. But I, I don't know why they're holding off. I don't know why they haven't sent it in. It's not that they weren't allowed a permit. They haven't asked for it and I don't know why. As far as a couple of other things, the storage building, everybody's so worried about it. It's going to have one foot thick of cement blocks. The fire department is checking into the fire suppression system and the
Uh, that's not, that's not part of my question.
Oh, I thought you wanted me to talk now.
No, I just, I was talking about changing the P to an SP.
Okay, okay. You go ahead and then I'll talk. Go ahead, Ted. I'm sorry.
Okay, so then Paul, or Mr. Conant, is he still on here? He's not on there. Okay, so I do want, I did want to thank him in front of everybody that's on here for his work that he's put in for the last seven months. I did not see ever, did I ever see or hear anyone say that anything was unprofessional or incorrect. I think it's lucky that the village has people like that who are willing to spend that type of time on behalf of the village. And I thank him for all the work he's put in, which is quite a lot, and his wife Ellen also. Both of them have put in thousands, hundreds and maybe thousands of hours worth of work on this thing. But I, and I did have a question for him, but I don't know why he left. He was, he was wanting me to answer his question, but my question to him was, why is he looking so dapper tonight?
Because his birthday is tomorrow.
I don't know. His wife is there. Maybe she can answer. You're on mute, Ellen.
Well, some days are good days.
Okay. Okay, so, and tell him happy birthday from me.
Happy birthday, Paul.
Then Tammy had a question for Ted and Pat, but I didn't catch what the question was. Can, can you turn on her thing, Anthony?
This is a comment of, of the, we aren't going back and forth on this. We would be doing that all night.
Well, I want to answer her question because there's been people that have emailed me and there's been, there's been, excuse me, there's been people that have emailed me and called me that, uh, they've been told that they will get an answer in writing from questions they ask and they never, they've never got an answer in writing at any time yet. So if Tammy can come on and just ask whatever question she had.
Ted, I had, she questioned the oversight of the DEC review. Who's, who's going, who has oversight of that? And she also asked about the emergency plan for storage of batteries.
Uh, that's a total, that's a, the emergency plan for the storage of the batteries that would go into the, the Sun Goo factory is a total failure on the part of the village. There is no safety plan. There's been no discussions on a safety plan. And that's what a lot of people have been complaining about for months. And I don't know who has oversight on DEC.
Not on the DEC, Ted. I just wanted to know who has oversight on what Sun Goo is asking for? Like, is anybody going to actually see and make sure that Sun Goo is asking for the proper study?
That's what scoping is. That's what scoping, public hearings.
One of the gentlemen earlier had said, George, sorry, George, had said earlier that it's, it's $40,000 study is not the normal study. So are we getting the right study done? Why are we trusting Sun Goo to get this study for us? I mean, they, they, they've already proved that they can't be trusted. We really need to know that the right questions are being asked and that they're doing the proper, asking them to do a study on the, the P-FAS, not on just whatever Linda wants them to do a study on.
To me, it sounds like a very, very good question, but I do not know the answer. Maybe, maybe, I don't know who there would be that could answer that, actually. Maybe Linda can, after I'm
Scoping. It's called scoping. Public hearings. It's a public scoping.
Then I did ask you today, Linda, about the trees on Clark Street. But could you give people that are listening an update on those trees that are supposed to be cut down?
Are you all done, Ted? Because I'll, I'll let you ask all your questions and I'll answer them all together. I, I am writing it down, though.
Well, I'm asking you, what, can you give everybody an update on the the status of cutting those trees down on Clark Street?
They continue to come down.
Here we go. Here we go. The trees on, the trees on, on Clark Street, they were cut down, I think, I think 15 of them were cut down. I do believe that they're doing it in between other jobs. They have more to cut down. I'm surprised, to be honest with you, that they cut down any knowing the Main Brothers, but I'm taking what we can get and I'm very happy they're being cut down. Now, as long as it's my turn to talk, I will continue. The storage building.
Okay, then I had, I had, I said one more question.
No, you can't interrupt me. You gave me my time. Now you have relented it to me. Now this is my time. Thank you so much.
No, I still have one more question. I still have one more topic.
It's going to be the suppression system.
Linda, I still have one more topic for my comment period.
I know, but you gave me the floor. Thank you very much. I told you I was going to do this.
On the trees, on the trees.
Our actual independent working in these fields of batteries, these are not just guys that got it off the internet. These are guys that actually work in it. That's what we
Okay, you answered, you answered the question on the trees, so I'll go ahead with my other question.
Now, the study data will be
Then the other question, Linda. Linda, I'm not finished with my, I'm not finished with my topics.
You're interrupting me, sir.
I'm not finished with my topics, Linda. This is, this is time for the trustees to give topics.
Yes, it is. And you can talk in a minute. You gave me the floor.
No, I gave you the floor on the answer to the trees.
I warned you. I warned you. Now I'm done, Ted. Come on, come on, give me a
So if you're, are you done with answering the tree question?
This is crazy. This is so crazy.
I'm still answering it.
Okay, let's hear some of the trees.
I agree. The DEC is going to oversee Sun Goo on any kind of impact statement. I don't know what kind of impact statement. That's what the DEC told me. I'm going
Do they deal with trees?
They sure do. And let's see.
I can't believe it. It's so crazy.
Takes care of all the questions that you guys ask.
Okay, so I had one, so now that you're done with the tree question, I have one more topic. My other topic is the the building on Oak Hill Avenue on Clark Street. It's a sitting duck, a lawsuit waiting for happen, to happen. And I brought it up at the last three meetings. And something needs to be done on this building. I mean, when, when two people had signs in their yards, there was somehow or some way, there was very quick action by the code office to go out and give them a citation and threaten $1,000 that they find for having a sign in their lawn about a month ago. So this is a building with a lawsuit waiting to happen. There's sawhorses that are blocking the sidewalk, have to walk in the street. People with wheelchairs, people with canes have to walk in the street to get around that building. And I'm not even sure if they're walking in the street, if they're safe. That building is so tall where stuff falls off the top of that building. It's liable to hit them even when they're in the street. And something definitely needs to be done on that before someone gets hurt and the village gets sued for not acting.
Hey, Ted.
Yes.
Anthony, I saw this weekend, I don't know if it was Saturday or Sunday, I drove down Oak Hill and they had, would it be the northbound lane of Oak Hill blocked off? And they had a lift there on the sidewalk and they were doing, I don't know if they were, you know, taking, I don't know if they're repairing anything or kind of scraping the paint out there, but I did see they had the part of the road closed. They had a lift there. And they had the road closed. If you're coming down Clark Street and would take a left on Oak Hill, that that left lane blocked off too. So I don't know if anybody want, you know, I could call over there.
Do you think that was, um, do you think that was Huron that was working on behalf of Huron?
There were Huron, um, Huron barricades were up. It did say Huron campus on the barricade, so.
And then Linda had mentioned something to me too, that something about NICE egg wires are maybe in the way of something. I don't know whether they have to be, they have to help to Huron so that they can get to the building, maybe. I don't know what that's about.
Maybe we can call them and ask what they were doing over the weekend. But I did see
Yeah, I'm very, I'm very glad. Thank you, Anthony. I'm glad to hear that. I hadn't heard about that at all yet. So there, that's my, the end of my topics. So now it's your turn, Linda.
Thank you. I talked to Brenda Grober. I sent her a text and I said to her, trustee Pat Dorner just informed us he talked to you and you were against Sun Goo coming to Endicott. He said you admitted to make a mistake. Brenda, not true. I continue to tell No Burn Broom that we have to agree to disagree about the company and the project. I said, can I publicize what you said? Yes, I stand by the company and the project. I'm just tired of getting calls from No Burn members telling me what a horrible thing I've done to their community and the horrible emissions they are going to harm their children. The long and the short of it is, I could read you the whole thing, but you can contact her. Her name is Brenda Grober. She's with the Empire State Development. She's the one who brought the company here. And you guys can contact her and ask her if she talked to me and Cheryl and exactly what she said. I have a copy of the text right here. So I'm tired of people saying I'm lying when I'm not, but the best part is I have proof for everything I'm saying. So go ahead and ask me another time or come in to see it. I have a whole file cabinet full of it. So Eileen, would you like to get rid of our meeting for?
Can I ask, can I ask Bob a question first?
Yeah, you can go ahead. Sure.
Two, actually, two things. One, can the village be sued for negligence over at that Oak Hill plant? If we, our enforcement isn't strong enough, could they drag us into something like that if they don't do what we're asking and we don't, we're not powerful enough or forceful enough to make them do what they gotta do?
On the other side of the street, too.
Well, there, there's two different questions. One, can we be sued? And the other, can we be held liable? We can certainly be sued for it, absolutely. In terms of liability, I would argue that it's Huron's responsibility, especially if the enforcement officials have notified them of the requirement and have sent that kind of, initiated that kind of enforcement action. So I would advocate the position that the village should not be liable for that. But separate and apart from that, I think is how forceful should we be acting here? And if there is a potential for human harm, e- even if we're, even if we're not held liable, and I'm not saying that we couldn't be held liable, I'm just saying we, I would, I would argue against it. But separate and apart from liability is just the importance of avoiding human harm. So I think this is something, if there is a danger, we ought to keep on top of and continue to push Huron to make the changes.
And our, our fire department, our fire marshals have been over there constantly working on this. Luckily, we do have a sidewalk on the other side of the street. And I've noticed on Franklin, there's only one sidewalk on one side, so some streets, there are only sidewalks on one side. We do have it blocked off, but Brian's been very, very on top of it. He's, he's a very together guy. That's why he was in charge of the Broom County Fire Inspectors. I mean, he knows the job.
Is Huron getting fined daily?
Not as long as they keep on going in and talking to, as far as I know. Now, I don't know if, if things have changed. I didn't ask him about the fines. I just asked him if he's constantly in contact with him to work on it and them and NICE egg, and he said yes. I didn't ask about fines.
Free pass.
And I can't let that last comment by the mayor go by
Oh, yes, I
without a comment. Brenda Grober, I believe she still probably wants the project, okay, because her boss wants it. To say that I'm making this stuff up is an outright lie and I'll call her a liar right now on this public call.
All right.
She is, she is, she has said that to other people I know that are very close, that are the most honest people I know, and they are not lying. And verbatim, I remember her telling me this on the phone when she had her meeting here at the village office. She thought the village was all in on this with having Cheryl and the mayor here. Everything was hunky-dory. Everything was sweet talking. Everything was great. She didn't know that the whole board was not being represented. She was shocked that the, the opposition was not at the meeting. And she also, I asked her, did you go to the, over on Roble Avenue and look at the plant? She goes, no, I didn't. I made a mistake. I should have gone over to see how close the plant was to the house. So I'm not, I know what I'm talking about. And if she thinks she's going to come to me or whatever, watch out. Thank you.
Like I say, anyone
Wow.
Contact her. Eileen, would you like to?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I second it.
Now you asked me
We roll call that or they need to roll call that?
Yes, yes.
I don't think it's controversial.
Ted, does Ted want to wrap it up?
Well, I know what you asked.
Ted, are you still on? You want to
Give us your vote?
Yes, I'm still on.
Okay, so we're gonna
We're, we're stopping the
Vote to adjourn?
You okay, man?
That's all you asked, brought me back for?
Make sure you're there. All right, you good?
I think we're good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Wow, what a crazy meeting. Holy God. I mean, that is local government in action, baby. It's amazing to see. I mean, even though it's, it's chaotic and it's, I want to make sure that Zoom thing closed. Let's see it running. It's a persistent bugger. Anyway, I'll deal with that another time. But wow, was that amazing or what? So, so many crazy things. First of all, wow, I couldn't believe it. I can't believe it. I do believe it. I'm, I'm just thrilled. Let me get rid of that one thing. That the 5G. Oh, that's the wrong, what am I doing? I gotta go back to this way. Hold on. Okay, now. There it is. Capture right. Okay. So let me frame, frame this up a little bit better. And, wow, maybe my see the top of my head at least, or I could do like this, something like that. And then how about if I come over here a little bit this way? Can I come out that way more? Okay. So, man, let's see, is there anybody on the, on the livestream here? Okay, so we got History Hunting with Tom, LOL. Wow. These meetings are wild. No kidding. But, I mean, this is kind of like, it's, it's fun and it's dynamic and this is what local government should be. Most of the time, it's just so mundane and people run through the motions. The, the people, the communities disengaged. They don't know what's going on. So it's really, I think it's amazing. Entertaining night, yeah. I just think it's really amazing to see, to see such a dynamic give and take. And it feels like sometimes we're losing. But I said this from the, from the, from early on, that I've done a lot of these different environmental campaigns. I've really worked on a lot. And what, the general rule of thumb that I see is that having the facts and the law on your side doesn't matter so much. What really matters is the people power. Seriously, what matters is the people power. If you have the people, you can do anything. You don't have the people, you're probably You don't have the people, you're probably not gonna win, even if you have a strong legal case. So, you know, I'm just really, even though, you know, I'm excommunicated by the leadership of No Burn Broom and I'm really torn. I don't know. I got an invitation to be on this Paul thing tomorrow, this happy birthday thing. And I really do, I admire Paul. Guess who was the one that recruited Paul, that found Paul, that brought him and told him about the incinerator, okay? That didn't make it onto the little history video. They completely act like, I don't know why, they act like I'm invisible, you know? I, you know, and I've done all this work, you know? This is what, this is what I do and I get no recognition for it. And I'm struggling right now, okay? So a little bit of recognition from this community would really be wonderful right about now and from No Burn Broom. But anyway, what am I trying to say here? Let me collect myself and see where I was going with this. I'm really, I'm really, even though they run me out and fuckwit Rob Tiberi, fuck you. You blow me off the, even the, 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 what'd you call it? The town hall meeting? I get disconnected. I can't even speak. Not only am I not invited to present, and guess who had the answer? I mean, you finally, thank God, you finally got around to saying the right words. Type one seeker. And, uh, you know, I haven't heard you, I hear, God bless you, Terry Farrell. I hear you say coordinated review. You're the only one that says it. I still don't hear No Burn Broom saying that. You do say, you say all three. You say the right thing. But the big deal, the purpose of seeker, the purpose of the New York State Environmental Quality Act is the environmental impact statement. That's what you're trying to do. That's what you're trying to get to, is the environmental impact statement. So, you know, it took a long time to get even, No Burn Broom didn't understand seeker. They didn't really seem to understand it and they wouldn't listen to me. And they were going off and doing crazy stupid stuff like the protest petition. I mean, it's, it's, it's one thing in a bag of things. That shouldn't be your only thing. That shouldn't be your main focus. And when it's clearly a long shot. And guess what happened? After they spent all that money on an engineering firm to verify, you know, what the, you know, and it went on for months. When was, how many months did it go on? You know, uh, and what happened? And it only was, the purpose of this thing was to get a super majority vote for the zoning change on 5.7. This is so complicated. I just can't believe how tedious it is to explain all this, right? So anyway, what am, what am I getting to? I'm, I have a lot of, uh, sadness of being kind of run out of No Burn Broom, okay? I just do. So, but Paul Connet's birthday is tomorrow and Paul Connet is a super professional. And you know your stuff, Paul Connet, and you're funny. And you've got that great pedigree and you've got the great, your character, your accent. You know, it sounds almost like a, is it Scottish? Are you Scottish? You almost have a brogue about the way you speak. So you're fabulous. I don't know why you treat me like shit though, but I think you're fabulous and I'm really torn about coming. I mean, really would like to wish you a happy birthday, but I don't, I feel like you don't fucking respect me and I've done a fucking shitload of work on this incinerator, okay? So a little recognition for me right now would be a little good from this community. So anyway, that's my rant, but what a crazy meeting. Holy God. Yeah, it was pretty nutty, all the. So the one really fabulous thing that I thought was the 5G. They actually tabled that shit, you know? They said, this is enough of a significant concern. And I did call both Ta- uh, I called, uh, Pat Dorner and also Ted Warner and had a good chat with, with Ted. And I was the one that told Ted, I said, Ted, this contract agrees to give up our rights. Because it limits the scope of, uh, uh, of remedy. And it limits the scope of what can be rejected. So if the federal law says that, why do we have to agree to it in the contract? We don't have to agree to that in the contract. That's a super important point. I hope that, uh, Bob McCurdy hears it and I hope that Ted Warner and Pat Dorner hear it. And man, really, real kudos to Bob McCurdy. I really, you know, appreciated, what was the explanation? I'm trying to remember now. He went into this little kind of a rant. But it was, uh, what was it about? Anyway, uh, Bob McCurdy is doing a good job. Pat and Ted, as always, great job, crazy meeting. And I'm trying to think. So I'm trying to think about the, uh, the state of the incinerator permit is up in the air. Officially, it's been issued. It is out, okay? This permit has been issued. Uh, so it hasn't been rescinded. They're making promises about this PFAS thing. And I think it's such a hot issue, even with the attorney general looking at it. I don't think the, the DEC, I think it is kind of a stalemate situation right now with the permit. I think they're gonna have to issue a new permit. And if they issue a new permit, it's gonna issue, they're gonna have to issue a new, hopefully a positive declaration this time. With the positive declaration gets us the whole environmental impact statement. Here's one of the points that I wanted. I mean, I was making, putting stuff, flashy stuff on the screen when it happened. But this is an important thing. They were saying, how do we know? They were talking about the price, the fee that San Gyo is gonna offer to chip in for this environmental impact statement. They were all asking the same, you know, a lot of people are asking a similar question. They were saying, how do we know what is the, how do we know San Gyo is gonna look at the right things? And that's called scoping. That is called scoping. So there typically are four public hearings when you get a full environmental impact statement. We have to keep banging on the DEC and making everybody understand this. This is what I've been, this is my expertise. Because I've been through it so many times with so many permits, okay? I know a little bit about seeker and I might not be right all the time, but I do my best, okay? And nobody's right all the time. Paul Connet isn't right all the time. So I'm just saying, we normally get four public hearings. You need to understand this. The first one is scoping. It's a scoping hearing. What happens during a scoping hearing? Well, you say, what is it that this environmental impact statement ought to cover? Hold on. Okay, four. Number one, let's go this way for you, cause you go, all right, so you know, left or right for you. Scoping is the first one. Scoping is where you say, what, what are the boundaries of this environmental impact statement? What are, what do we want it to look at? Here's some of the things that you could possibly ask for, that we could ask for as a community, okay? A study of the human health impacts of whatever the chemicals are known to be, uh, going to be emitted from that thing, okay? Human health impacts. Number two, uh, property values. You can do an economic study, okay? Number three, uh, people were asking for, a lot of people today, I'm so happy to hear it, cause this is one of the big deals for me was, uh, and, uh, an emergency response plan. You can ask for an emergency response plan. You can ask for a road use study, okay? You can ask for, um, uh, a, a quantitative risk assessment, a QRA, a quantitative risk assessment. Here's another thing you can ask for. We can ask for. There's lots of things. It's like you can, that's the whole thing. Not any of us, I don't have all the answers. Everybody has unique contributions, uh, you know, that they bring up. And a lot of the speakers today brought up really good points. We had really great speakers today, uh, the people that did get their, get in. So, scoping is all about asking for the bounds of what we want to let, what are your concerns? Do you wanna do, you know, some kind of an impact on the ball field? So, you know, make sure you, you know, they study the air patterns and the, you know, the molecular weights of these chemicals as they're coming out of the stacks, how, we know what's gonna shower down on the ball fields, you know? That could be looked at. There's all kinds of things we can ask for in an environmental impact statement. So the first public hearing is scoping. The next one is the draft, EIS. We all look it over. How do we like it? Do we like it? Do we think it's pretty good? Or let's do modifications to it. Then you get the final, EIS, FEIS. And then the last one you get is the, um, the permit itself, okay? So we've gotten, how many, how many DEC public hearings have we had so far? Um, let me count. Well, there haven't been any, right? Haven't been any DEC public hearings. Hmm, been zero. We need four, starting with scoping. Terry Farrell gets this. She repeats this. She, it took a long time, you know? It's, it's, it's tough. It's tedious. It's really complicated, all this seeker stuff, okay? So four public hearings, starting with scoping. That's what the people were talking about tonight. They were going, how do we make sure that San Gyo, we're for 40,000? What are they gonna cover? They're just gonna cover a couple of different, what do they call, somebody called it a point, a focused, we're gonna focus on a couple of areas. Scoping, 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 scoping. So I hope people hear me on that. You have to repeat this word. Be like a parrot. Parrot what I'm telling you. And have I ever been wrong? I guess I have been wrong, but I've been right a whole bunch of times in what I've been asking for here, cause we wasted, anyway, I don't wanna get into that whole thing again, but scoping, four public hearings. Start repeating this, EIS. And also be like Terry Farrell, okay? Terry gets it about the coordinated review. What's the coordinated review? The coordinated review is basically when, uh, it's something the DEC was supposed to do. It's something the DEC said they did. And then our village attorney, Bob McCurdy, wrote to them and said, hey, how come you said, it doesn't look like you did this. You said you did it. You said a coordinated review was performed. They said it back in November of 2017. It's called the Notice of Completed Application. But they didn't. And then the DEC attorney, Joe Sluzar, used to be Broome County Attorney. He says, oh, it was, it was, it was a typo. It was a little typo. We should have said uncoordinated review. There wasn't any uncoordinated review. I have a foil in right now. They're, they're just ignoring it. I'm not even sure that one's been acknowledged. I asked for, show me the documents of this uncoordinated review and I'm getting crickets and tumbleweeds, you know? Nothing. So, anyway, uh, let me just plug this really quick, you know? Uh, I do, where's my snail mail? How come? Oh, there it is. There's my snail mail. And let me make that big. I really work in the public interest, friends, and I live on donations. I swear to God, this is what my main income is. I'm gonna have to get a job or I have to get on welfare or something because I'm not making enough to survive on every month. It's like my regular phone is turned off right now. So this is a kind of a different, this is a digital line, but anyway, so, you know, if you appreciate my work, I am doing leading edge work, work that isn't being done, isn't being done by the local Sierra Club. I don't wanna alienate the Sierra Club. I do have friends and supporters in the local Sierra Club, okay? I'm very grateful for your friendship and your support. The organization itself is not a leader on local environmental issues. It took you so long to even make a public statement about this thing. Now you got, you're taking credit for moving Donna Lupardo. How about the person that caught Donna Lupardo on a hot mic and said, hey, Donna, what about an EIS? And she's like, I can't, I don't wanna die, I don't wanna go there with you right now. It's like, you don't wanna go, I'm not asking you for like a date. I'm asking you about an environmental impact statement for Endicott. You know, the place that's been national news for a place, Center of Environmental Contamination, legacy environmental contamination? Don't we deserve an environmental impact statement? I'm not prepared, right? I can't, I'll have to, I don't, I'm not fully up to. Wait a minute, Donna, weren't, wasn't your name on the press release from the Empire State Development Corporation? Wasn't your name on the press release back in September of 2018? What do you mean? I don't know. I can't, I'm not fully. So she finally moved. And who, who took credit? Local Sierra Club. They didn't even, the, the club didn't even file comments. That's really an indication when Sierra Club makes comments on a docket, on an environmental permit, because it means, you know, their attorneys are gonna be behind you. Didn't get that support. I'm just stating a fact. The local Sierra Club, it's like you're trying to drag them along on every single issue. And the other thing is somebody, I don't know if I should say who or not, somebody explained to me how the Sierra Club works and it's really, it's kind of interesting that basically it's something like they, um, they're all about conserving. You know, they're all about conserve, you have to be an endangered species already in order to be conserved. If you're not an endangered species, Sierra Club, you know, like communities, Sierra Club really isn't interested in protecting communities. They're interested in protecting the wild places. It's just another example. I've seen this all over the law where there's this separation between special places and sacrifice zones. And I'm just gonna tell you that everybody in Albany considers Endicott to be a sacrifice zone. Why do you think they send the stink trucks here? You know, the leachate and Dr. Ready's horse pee mixed with a banned gasoline additive, MBTE. Who was the one that was, informed the community about that? Okay, I was a latecomer. Jim Little gets credit. Mark Bacon gets a lot of credit. They were the ones that really figured this out from the beginning. Those two brought me on. I, I did a lot of work on that, fighting that. And Donna Lupardo did not help us and she wasn't gonna help us here, except for this big group. The big group, that's what wins campaigns, the big group. So I'm super grateful that No Burn Broom exists. I'm really grateful for everybody. Except the fuckwits that run the thing that don't let me talk. You know, why am I not considered a leader of that group? I was the one that, you know, it's, I was the one begging people to get, at least like I would, for six months, I was trying to say, hey, commu- hey, Endicott, listen to me, an incinerator is coming. I hate the fuzz. I gotta move my fingers slower. Endicott. I was going, ah, Endicott, an incinerator's coming. Hey, listen. And people, I just feel like people go, oh, that's just Bill. Bill always waves his hands like that. He always, just ignore him. He just, blah, he just always, I'm like, hey, an incinerator. Finally, finally, the, there's two people that were really responsible and pulling together the big group. And one of them doesn't want her name out there, so I'm not gonna say her name. A lot of people know who I'm talking about, but Terry Farrell was this, another one. Terry Farrell's been a real leader in this from the beginning of No Burn Broom, okay? Uh, but you know, if somebody would give me a little recognition that I was the one that was truly the one way out in front. I was six months ahead of everybody else. Nobody else was paying attention to this, okay? And now I'm way out ahead on 5G. Nobody else is jumping on this either. So who is the environmental sentinel of Endicott? Who has been on top of all of these issues from stink trucks with Dr. Ready's horse pee mixed with MBTE, a banned chemical and leachate, you know, leachate from the landfill and all this, you know, the, the, the 10 times super concentrated, uh, ultra stink juice coming from Seneca Meadows, biggest landfill in New York State, takes waste from six states in the Northeast, including New York City, including hazardous waste, ends up in that landfill, including fracking waste. Who is the one that figured this all out? Somebody can't put in this kind of effort without support, friends. I need your support. So there is the donate link, tinyurl.com/donatetobillhouston. That's my PayPal, okay? There is my snail mail. Send check or money orders. Send, make it out to William Houston, P O Box 22, Endicott, New York, 13761. I really need your help, friends. If you want me to, if you appreciate, if you don't appreciate me, don't do anything. If you don't care about my well-being, don't do anything, okay? And everything will work out. If you do care about me, and I know times are tough for everybody. There are people that have lots of money. There really are people with lots of money. I don't need much. I need about a thousand dollars a month, sustained income. Really, it's more like 1,200 sustained income. I need to have a little bit of a buffer, I need to file a lawsuit with the DEC, that's gonna take probably about $300 for various kinds of filing fees that you have to make. You gotta pay for every motion in New York, I just learned about this. It's very costly to file a lawsuit, unless I can file in, you know, in, in paupers. I don't know how to say that, in, 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 in paupers, I think that's how you say it. As a pauper, I'm a pauper. So, um, if you appreciate my work, friends, you have to help support it. Because I'm not getting paid by any NGOs, okay? I did some work for one and guess what? I lost it over partly my own, uh, you know, not prioritizing my time correctly, not getting reports done, that kind of stuff. But it was also political. I'm never gonna say the group, but I was, I lost a major donor largely over political reasons, okay? And, you know, while we're on this topic right now, and I do my best, everything I do, I do for the earth. Everything I do, I do for all beings. I do for the insects, you know? Here's another thing, 5G, 5G has, they're talking about, it destroys insects. Did you ever see, there's this cartoon of, I can't, I'm not gonna be able to find it super quickly, but it's a cartoon, you know, this guy driving and it says 1966 on it, he's driving a car and his car is loaded with insects, splattered and he's like, and he's trying to see and he's struggling, but he's like, he's angry cuz all the insects are splattering. And then there's a guy that says, you know, uh, 2020 and he's driving and his, his windshield is clear and he's happy. There's no insects, the insects are gone. And a lot of it has to do with this microwave radiation from cell phones and from all kinds, telecom. We live in this soup of radio frequency radiation and they, you know, there's lots of studies out there. I just talked to Gusty, sorry, Gusty, Gusty Bogock, Gusty Bogock from the downstate area or formerly from New York City. And, uh, we, pollinators, there's threats to pollinators and I've talked to a lot of other people, I'm gonna try to, we're gonna be doing a lot more shows about 5G coming up. But I need your support. You know, I am grateful for donations in any amount, I got a $5 donation recently, okay? That's about as small, you know, as, I've got some noisy neighbors. And, uh, I'm grateful for any, but even, you know, the high, the larger donations, hundred dollar donations are really, uh, could come in really handy right now. And I think I'm gonna have to end the broadcast, cuz I'm gonna, it sounds like the neighbors are getting restless. So, anyway, uh, it was an exciting, I'm just gonna wrap it up, it was an exciting meeting, it seems like I, seems like there was something I wanted to talk about, I'm not sure if I covered all the bases or not. So I'm gonna sign off, friends. Thanks for tuning in, thanks for your support. And, uh, seriously, I, I, I have, I do get, I have, I get major, I've gotten a lot of support from donors. I have a few donors. Uh, I'm very fortunate that people do appreciate me and appreciate my work. And, uh, I'm very grateful to my donors, large and small. Sustaining donors, 20, if you can afford $20 a month, that would really help. So god bless you, I'm doing this for you, I do this work for you, I do this work for the earth. I do this work for god. And please subscribe to my YouTube channel, I'm starting to publish more to bit shoot because I got censored by YouTube. But my primary outlet is still YouTube right now, so, um, there you go, subscribe, there's my contact info. I appreciate you. We'll see you next time.